I certainly understand the jovial nature of everybody, given the beautiful day. I'm just sorry that we're in here and didn't set this up on the beach. Need to figure that out for one of our future board meetings. Actually be out there. That was amazing out there this morning. Thank you for joining us this morning. Going to go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, April 23rd. If you will, please join us in a flag salute led by Supervisor Gustafson.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Cindy, before you sit down, I'm going to ask you to just join me over here. It is my great honor to administer the oath of office to Supervisor Gustafson. This is an opportunity for her constituents up here at the lake to watch her get sworn in. We did it yesterday, but this is for you guys. Cindy, if you would please raise your right hand. You've already done that. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Cindy Gustafson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, I'm going to give you the opportunity, Cindy, to say some stuff to some folks up here like you had the opportunity down in Auburn yesterday.
Thank you all. It is such a pleasure and an honor and a tremendous responsibility to be up here serving both all of you, the county, the broad base of the county, and also this district. And it is such a privilege to work with the other four supervisors and the county staff, CEO, county council, and all the staff that are in the room today. And so I just thank you for this opportunity. I have a lot to learn, and bear with me. And I know I work hard and I have a lot to learn. How's that? Thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome. Okay, moving on, we have our consent calendar. Any items on the consent agenda, any board members wish removed for discussion? All right, seeing none, any items on the consent calendar that any members of the public would like us to remove for discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion on consent? Motion Holmes, second Wygant, roll call, please.
Gore.
Yes.
Wygant.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Gustafson.
Yes.
Yuler.
Hi, thank you very much. That brings us to public comment. This is time that any member of the public can address the board on any items not on the agenda. Understand that if the item's on the agenda, there will be time for public comment when we get to that item. Items raised under public comment the board is not allowed to take action on today, however, that doesn't mean that items raised under public comment go unnoticed or unattended to. So feel free to step forward, state your name, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you supervisors at all. My name is Wendy Wood, and my husband and I live in Lake Tahoe. We developed these beautiful homes along the west shore 10 years ago, wrote the solar code for TRPA. I have copies of what these look like and what they did look like for old cabins that were full of lead and asbestos, et cetera. So we are also developers specifically in Seattle and apartment owners in Seattle. We do come to our home on the west shore to rest and recuperate. And we have seen the evolution of short-term rentals here. We've dropped off about 90 pages each in material. My husband did quite a bit of research on the surrounding communities, what has been done recently, and it's literally a tidal wave of recent rules and regulations that have gotten into place. I just wrote a article op-ed in Moonshine Inc. this month. I received many, many comments of people who wanted to be here but live in the Bay Area because they have second homes and have very much, very much concerns of the current rules and regulations in, on the north and west shores of Lake Tahoe. Now, we have two other, two short-term rentals around us. They're owned by people who use the short-term rental platform to augment their income ability to afford the home, and they've been fine. One has been a little difficult with eight bedrooms, and he's gotten better. But this past year, in October of 2018, a short-term LLC renter with investors bought a small three-bedroom, three-bath summer cabin up the hill from us. And when I say up the hill, I mean up the hill. It was not a cabin that was used in the winter. There are three other cabins which were in me that are also summer cabins. And he has advertised on Airbnb that he will accommodate 16-plus people. That's the most you can accommodate. Now, as of December last year, Christmas, we, we had many of these people stop in front of our home and couldn't make it up the hill because no, no plow operator will go up there. Neither will the garbage service. Now Jennifer Merchant, I did a code complaint. She found that he didn't have garbage service. She could not, she couldn't find anything else wrong because Placer County does not have occupancy rules in place like others do. And that's what we're trying to do here, is trying to move, not to ban STRs, not to do deed restrictions, but to have occupancy rules in place. We know you bought all the host compliance modules, but you need enforcement, you need penalties, you need ways to enforce. We need people to call, ways to deal with the short-term renters because the law enforcement will not help us if someone stalled outside our bedroom window and distributes their chains and garbage like this. I have a lot more to say, but I've sent a lot, we've distributed a lot, and then we have some others who'd like to speak this. Oh, also Jennifer Merchant wasn't aware of this. If you do these wonderful brochures, they mean nothing, nothing, unless you have enforcement and penalties. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Diana Turnbull, and I'm a homeowner in the Talmont area of Sunnyside. I'm representing several of the homeowners in Talmont who could not make it today. In 2017, the peaceful enjoyment of my home ended when a home kitty-corner to me was purchased by an investor and rented full-time as a short-term rental. My neighbors and I were suddenly thrust into full-time property management for the constantly changing tenants. We've been interrupted at all hours of the day and night asking for shovels, blenders, food, help with their car, and making phone calls, among other things. The owner's response to our complaints, "But the tenants paid good money to rent the place, and I don't want to discriminate." One time, the home was rented out to high school graduates. We witnessed approximately 75 kids screaming, yelling, fighting, and drinking well past the 10:00 PM curfew. Police were called. I watched the deputy stand on the driveway, speak with two of the kids, then drive away. The party commenced. Later I found out that no citation, no warning to shut down was issued. The deputy who showed up later told me that he cannot ask for IDs until he witnesses or unless he witnesses drinking. The next day, garbage was strewn across multiple yards because the kids had left the trash on the deck and the bears got into it. This trash is dangerous and encourages the bears to hang around and break into other neighbors' homes. We spoke with the kids, who said that they, that the owner never provided them with any rules, and they admitted they were actually under the age of 21. Within a week of this, tenants renting another home on the same street proceeded to get drunk, and witnesses saw them stealing firewood from a neighbor for their own fire. Unattended outdoor fires by tenants are common in our neighborhood. During one such incident, several of us called the fire department about a large unattended bonfire burning outside. The landlord was never sighted, even though there were multiple complaints about fires started by his previous tenants. I was told by the fire department that they must quote "witness the fire" before they can cite. In response to a letter dated August 8th, 2017, to my complaint, Fire Marshal Todd Conradson indicated that they did in fact witness the fire. He wrote, "The district prefers to educate and encourage fire safety and prevention to unaware public rather than cite them." How will this help us when all of our homes are burned to the ground because Fire Marshal Todd didn't get around to educating tenants in time? Many STR owners are clueless regarding strict rules, including forfeiting deposits and immediate eviction for non-compliant tenants. I myself am a property owner. I have investment property, so I understand how it works. The biggest problem are the investors. The constant high turnover of tenants is frustrating and dangerous to those who live around them. I did reach out to multiple public offices to help and got the same runaround. Not our problem. Sorry, can't help. Just keep calling the sheriff and the police department. Well, we want visitors to enjoy their stay here, not harass them. We need policy now that gives locals the ability to stop abusive and dangerous behavior before someone gets hurt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to give a warm Alpine Meadows welcome to Cindy Gustafson.
Thank you.
I'm Lois Zell. I'm a resident of Alpine Meadows, and we've, my husband and I had had the home there since 1976. And we've always enjoyed living there, first on a part-time basis, and now that we're retired, we're up here full-time. We do all, we're registered to vote here in Placer County. We do our shopping here in Placer County. And we enjoy our neighborhood, except for the house next door, which has, it's a short-term rental. Our right to quiet enjoyment of our property is being trampled, and we are looking to Placer County for help. I've contacted Placer County, the previous board member, some of the staff, her staff, Jennifer Montgomery's staff, and some Placer County staff. The response has always been less than tepid. Needless to say, I'm disappointed. Again, we're looking to you for help with this issue. You need to get control of the owners and the tenants, and the only way to do that is with regulations that carry a fine. So again, have a good morning. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations, Cindy.
Thank you.
Since you are sort of new to this, I've provided a lot of research material, which is over here with the stickers on it.
I need your name for the record.
Okay. My name is Barbara Gary-Schore.
Thank you.
I live in Homewood, California. Wendy Wood is my husband, or my wife. I've established, I think she's established our credentials as real estate people. Anyways, I got distracted. I did a ton of research because this issue of short-term rentals and lack of rules in Placer County has become extremely critical. They are trampling our property rights, they're trampling our public health, they're overusing services. It's out of control. But I didn't come here with just complaints. I believe that I've come up with some ideas for Placer County to make this work. Enforcement is the biggest issue. Your current revenue department put out tips of being a good neighbor. Okay, I'm sorry, but I call those the Barney rules. Nobody's going to follow the Barney rules when they are raging drunk, and I have experiences personally. Okay, the other one that came from revenue services was, "We would like you to pay rent for everything, including your pet." Okay, well, that's great. I'm glad they're getting all this money, but they need to help us, the property owners that live here long-term, and pay property taxes and vote. So every community surrounding Placer County has rules and regulations for short-term rentals. That's Washout, that's Eldorado, that's the homeowners association at Donner, that's Sacramento, that's Roseville. I've spoken to a lot of them, and host compliance, we also spoke with. They said Placer's got everything they need. All they need to do is work on it. So I'm asking Placer County to put some rules in place. The easiest thing in the world to do, like Sacramento did, like Roseville did, $200 permit fee, which you would have to pass as an ordinance, I understand, every year would have to be paid by short-term rental owners. This would be with about 5,000 short-term rentals that you currently have in TOT, and host compliance can watch all this stuff, they have the data. That's a million bucks to operate this. You put an 800 number in place, you put a compliance officer in place, just like Donner's done. If there's a complaint, somebody calls the compliance officer, compliance officer calls the owner. If there's not a resolution within one to three hours, there's a $500 fine. Next one's $750, next one's $1,000. After that, they lose their permit to be a short-term rental. Washout County says if you're a short-term rental and you've had your permit pulled, that's a $5,000 fine. So I believe that is the kind of enforcement that we need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Yuler, members of the board. My name is Pat Davison with the Contractors Association Truckee, Tahoe. Welcome to new supervisor Gustafson. I am here today with our current President Peter Greenberger and Pat Souza with Hesslin Construction. Both general contractors were part of the team that visited with you last year about the budget for the building department, and it's that time of year again. I know Steve Pedretti gave you a proposal for a new position in the Tahoe office called the Permit Processor. We love that idea. This would be the person who oversees all things related to plans and permits. You may not know that the Tahoe office has six queues or lines. So when you bring in a set of building plans, your set goes into one of those queues. When a contractor or homeowner calls to ask where are my plans, this new person, the Permit Processor, can easily answer that question. When a set of plans have sat on the shelf for too long, the Permit Processor can find out why those plans have not been reviewed and help break the logjam, or at least notify the owner about a delay. These problems have happened before, and we do not want to repeat this year. The construction season gets into full swing next week, May 1st. We think it will be a busy year, but more so towards the end, as plans are submitted to beat the January 1st, 2020 effective date of new codes. The county has established goals and timelines for plan check turnaround time. We are so very interested in making sure homeowners, business owners, and others get the level of service they are paying for. So for many reasons, we think Permit Processor is a big improvement to the current system and urge your support for this position. We will continue to work with your CEO and CDR head as we get closer to your Budget Decision Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Yuler, Board of Supervisors, Peter Greenberger, President of the Contractors Association. Just to follow up on Pat Davison's comments, over the last two years, the discussions with board members as well as building department staff have brought us to a consensus and conclusion. Chief Building Official and the Community Development Director both agree that the Permit Processor is a key solution to providing a timely and predictable permit processing process. Getting it done and meeting public's expectations and facilitating the commerce of the county is an essential service. Just to continue Pat's thoughts, I would also add that the increased revenue from more permits being processed, as well as the increased revenue that will come to the county from additional new homes that get built, from more home improvement work that gets done when reassessments are done, this is revenue that's going to flow directly into the county. It's not theoretical. It really will be there if more permits are processed. And I would argue that those things alone would pay for the cost of the additional permit processor position. So I think there's a lot of logic in it. There's good math that supports that, and we would ask you to give your consideration to it. Understand that people need to have their decks repaired, people need to have their additions built, people want to build new homes. The state of processing time on the building department website is two to four weeks, and that is rarely met. More often, that timeframe is exceeded by months rather than weeks or days. So this is something that makes good business sense. It's something that has been proven to work, and we ask for your consideration with it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to address the board under public comment? Good morning. Feel free to address that down. There you go.
Yeah, my name is Barbara Christian. I live here on the north shore. I've been a resident here in Tahoe for about 40 years. We had a neighbor move in about a year and a half ago, and she's got a short-term rental. And we've called the police in the past year about 15 to 20 times. So what I'm asking is for regulation, strict regulations on these short-term rentals so that my husband and I can sleep at night. He works in the operating room as an assist, and he needs to be on his toes. I'm an elementary school teacher, and I need to have my sleep. It's a basic right that we should be able to sleep in our own home at night without opening the window and yelling to the neighbors, which they then yell back something else. That is not their problem. And then if we call the police, usually they respond, but sometimes they say they're on another emergency. So it would be really great to have regulations in place that were better than just call the police, because when it happens over and over again, it's not effective. So I just feel like there should be a license or a permit in place with the understanding that that license or permit can be redacted, can be taken away. If the people that own the property cannot enforce regulations, the main one for me is quiet hours. But there's also been cigarettes flicked off the deck into the front yard, which is super dry. There's been garbage bags left out in the driveway for the bears to get into, which return and become more aggressive, looking for that food that they were able to get so easily last time they were there. So I'm asking for your help to please regulate these types of homes that you're allowing into our residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Danielle Johnston. I am a full-time resident in Tahoe City in the Dollar Point neighborhood. I'm also an income property owner. I own two properties on the west shore in the Chamberlains neighborhood, as well as in Tohoma, which is technically, that one's in Eldorado County. The reason I'm, you know, wanting to speak is that we have not run into some of the issues that South Lake Tahoe has with partying at our rentals. I will say I do employ a local property manager who does a great job. He in turn employs about 30 local people, people whose kids are going to school in Truckee and North Tahoe and are in school with my child, who also attends local school. I think that, you know, the root of our housing problem here is Bay Area salaries. And, you know, it's a reality that people there make enough money that they can buy homes in the Tahoe area, that they only spend maybe a week or two in. And we're not going to be able to change that. I mean, that situation, it is what it is. But, you know, what I am hoping is that Placer County can maybe come up with some solutions. I understand regulation, maybe not overregulation with short-term rentals where it begins to strip property owners' rights. There should be some rules, but I'm hoping that you might consider maybe an incentive program for second homeowners. You know, I know we have a housing shortage here for locals, and instead of restricting things so much, maybe think of an incentive program like a property tax break for second homeowners. I know for myself, for the two houses I own in Placer County, you know, I'm paying over $33,000 a year in property taxes. It's a lot of money. For me, it's made sense to do short-term rentals because it just, it brings in more income than if I was to do a long-term rental. You know, I just, I feel like people might be more willing to listen if they're going to get an incentive, and it helps balance the equation because the numbers have to work for people. So anyway, I don't feel like I've been very eloquent here, but, you know, I'm just, I don't think short-term rentals are the problem. They provide jobs in the area. I think that we need to make, we need to figure out a way to make the short-term rentals work, but also figure out a way to get local people into houses that are vacant and not otherwise being used. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Woods, and I'm a local homeowner and property owner in the Talmont neighborhood on the west shore. I have a vacation rental there that I manage myself, and I employ three employees. And I empathize with the problems, the nuisance rentals in my neighborhood. My house is not one of those. I'm very good at, I have an age limit, I have no party policy, I live two blocks from the house, so I've never had a complaint about my property, and I pay all my taxes. And I, I do, I like the ideas that I heard earlier about the permit process and the hotline number. I think those are good ideas. I don't like the idea of a complete ban because that would put me and my three employees out of work. And I also think it would be bad for our local economy because there's a lot of these homes here. And I just, I guess I have a question is, I thought this was following, I got an email about this being a TRPA issue, and I don't understand how that's their jurisdiction. And, but now that I'm here at this Placer County meeting, I think that makes more sense. And my other question is just, he mentioned that there's 5,000 vacation rentals, and how many of those are getting complaints? Because I have one, and I've heard about a couple in my neighborhood, and it's a big neighborhood. And so I think we need to look at the big picture, that there are a lot of people who do this business and there aren't complaints. And so possibly that hotline and permit issue is a good way to do it, but not to limit them completely because that would put a lot of people out of work.
Thank you.
Do I have to wait for her to talk?
Nope, you just fire away. They'll start up the clock.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. First of all, my name is Steve Pettit, and I'm a resident in North Auburn. I'd like to welcome Supervisor Gustafson to the board. You're my supervisor. I supported your appointment on the strength of people that I know and trust. So welcome, I wish you well.
Thank you.
I don't quite know how to bring this up, but it seems kind of strange to me that we're here in Tahoe with a third agenda and we're talking about the master plan update in Auburn. Duett Center's in Auburn, four miles from my home. This is 80 miles from here. So I think it's odd that we're voting on this. And the second thing is Cindy's been here two days. To expect her to absorb the amount of material that's behind this master plan and vote on the memorandum that's in front of the board today, I think is wrong. So I request that you table item three for at least 30 days to allow the new supervisors to get up to speed.
Thank you. I'm going to remind folks that if your comments are on an item that's on our agenda, please wait until that agenda item is brought up because there will be time for public comment on those items. But if you have a comment on an item that's not on the agenda today, feel free to share it now. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Dave Williams. I'm a resident, I live on west shore near Sunnyside. Also own a company, Criterion Properties. We manage about 250 properties between west shore, north shore, out the Truckee, North Darn around. I just want to piggyback on some of the comments that were made earlier, and I think in particular the comment made by Elizabeth was particularly relevant, really taking in context the big picture of what goes on. Obviously, we live in a market where it's a desirable area to visit. It's a tourism sector. A lot of people come here in the summer and winter, obviously, to enjoy the area. And I think we're all in favor of having people come here and demonstrate responsible behavior when they're here. At the same time, you know, I can speak to the properties that I manage, you know, the 250 homes that we have. Over three years, we've had exactly two complaints about noise. To me, that's not a problem when you take into account thousands of reservations of people that have come and gone through those properties. I think a lot of that is as a result of education. It was mentioned earlier about that, you know, the flyers that Placer County put together, the Good Neighbor Flyers. together, the Good Neighbor Flyers. I think those are a great start. Um, those are the kinds of materials that I put in place in the, in the properties that we manage. We are very specific in the rules and the terms that the, that the guests need to agree to, uh, upon commencing their reservation, uh, things about no partying. You know, we specifically talk about, we want everybody to come in and enjoy themselves, but at the same time, you need to be mindful of your noise, you need to be mindful of your trash, you need even be mindful of the amount of vehicles that you bring into the area, because parking is a consideration a lot of times throughout the year. So there's things like that, that I think that if we just get a little more proactive in how we can communicate and how we push out that information, that education to the public that's coming in here, teach them what it means to be responsible when they come into the area, how to enjoy the area in a responsible way that we're all going to appreciate, I think that goes a long way. I mean, I've seen it with my business, and, um, I just think that we need to look harder at that and lean on that a little bit harder. Punitive measures, I think some of the regulations and things, I mean, I'm aware of them. I deal with properties in El Dorado County. I have a ton of properties in Tahoe Dono, I'm aware of what they're doing up there. All that's fine and good. Basically, that's just, you know, slap the stick when, when there's a known problem. And, um, you know, some of that I think needs to be looked at probably, but I personally believe the thing that goes a lot further is just proactive, good, solid, consistent education that's going to help people understand what to do, how to, how to behave themselves when they're here. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else under public comment? Anybody after this gentleman under public comment? Okay, you'll get the last word.
Thanks for the gentleman comment. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Uh, Gary Davis, civil engineer, Tahoe City. I wanted to, uh, just say you've done a very astute job on picking your supervising. I've known Cindy for decades, and she's been an incredible leader for our North Tahoe community, and will serve well for the whole Placer County. Thank you very much for that choice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Very nice note to end our public comment on. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on. Uh, board member and county executive reports. Any board members have anything they wish to report?
Amen.
No?
No.
Okay. All right, we will then move to our nine-ten timed item. This is a Public Works item. Uh, we're being asked to consider modification of tipping fees, processing fees, and garbage Good morning. Press the little button there in front of you, and that should light you right up. There you go, perfect.
Good morning, Chair Euler. Board members. Uh, my name's Walter Schwal. I'm a senior civil engineer with Public Works, Environmental Engineering Division. I'm here to request the following actions related to the solid waste, uh, services in the eastern portion of Placer County. Uh, first, conduct a public hearing to receive and tabulate protests on proposed garbage collection fee adjustments in franchise area three. Second, approve a Sixth Amendment to the Solid Waste Handling Service Agreement with Placer County Eastern Regional Landfill Link for ERL and Tahoe Truckee Disposal Link, also known as TTD, to modify garbage collection fees, tipping fees, and processing fees. And then third, make a finding that the fees are derived directly from the costs of providing the service or except from environmental review. So in July of 2015, the county entered into the agreement with ERL and TTD for collection, transportation process, and recycling disposal of solid waste in franchise areas two and three, which is everything in the county east of the Cedar Colfax to Nevada State Line. Garbage collected by TTD is processed at, by ERL at the Eastern Regional Material Recovery Facility, or the MRF, where recycled materials are sorted from the mixed waste. Uh, the MRF tipping fees, uh, paid for the contractor to process the material, and also for the county to monitor and maintain the closed Eastern Regional Landfill. Per the terms of the agreement for fiscal year 2019-20, your ERL is entitled to a three-point-nine-three percent COLA increase to their MRF processing fees. The COLA also factors in an increase of the California minimum wage, which is expected to reduce the county's portion of the annual tipping fee revenue by as much as two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand for this year. So we're proposing to increase tipping fees collected at the MRF, uh, with the mixed waste tipping fee increasing from seventy-eight dollars to eighty-one dollars a ton in order to maintain adequate funding through the next fiscal year. Uh, the California minimum wage is scheduled to increase every year, uh, until it reaches fifteen dollars an hour in January of 2022. Uh, this will increase ERL processing, processing fees each year and impact the tipping fee revenue the county collects. Uh, so we're anticipating tipping fee increases each year through, uh, 2022 to offset this increased cost. So the actual garbage collection fees consist of three components. Uh, the service component charged by TTD for collecting and transporting the garbage to the MRF, uh, will increase based on a COLA of two-point-eight-seven percent. Uh, per the agreement, the COLA is calculated every two years, um, and will not be subject to adjustment again until July of 2021. The disposal component is the tipping fee charged to TT, TTD at the gate, um, and that will be adjusted to reflect the increases in the tipping fees charged at the MRF. And then the special fee component, which funds, funds the county's solid waste program, is a four percent, uh, added on to the service and disposal component. Um, this fee is currently adequate to fund the program, so there's not going to be any change in the, in the special fee. The proposed garbage collection fees are shown in the attachment to your memo, titled "Proposed Rate Increases for 2019-20." Uh, just some examples, the single can service is going to go up by eighty-seven cents to twenty-three dollars and nineteen cents per month in area two, which is a three-point-nine-percent increase. In area three, it's going to increase by seventy-two cents, uh, to twenty dollars and fourteen cents with a three-point-seven-percent increase. On the commercial side, the three cubicle yard, uh, service is going to increase by nine dollars and fifty-eight cents up to two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and eighty-seven cents per month in area two, and up to, uh, in area three, uh, seven dollars and seventy-seven cents to two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and sixty-seven, two-thirty-six, sixty-seven per month, which is a three-point-four-percent increase. So all the property owners in franchise area three, where garbage collection is mandatory, were mailed a postcard, uh, noticing the proposed garbage collection fee increase in the public hearing today. Uh, the notice was mailed forty-five days prior to today's hearing, uh, in compliance with Prop 218 requirements. The clerk of the board will provide a tally of protests received from property owners up to the time of the hearing. Uh, if the majority of the property owners in franchisee, franchise area three file written protests, then the fee, fee increase will not be implemented. Um, if the fee increases are not implemented, ERL and TTD are still entitled to their increase in disposal fees and the COLA on the service portion of the collection fees. Uh, this was, would result in the need to, to use ERL and solid waste reserves to reimburse both ERL and TTD. Uh, property owners in franchise area two, where garbage collection is not mandatory and not subject to Prop 218, were notified of the increased fees through a insert in their billing. So at this time, uh, we're requesting the board take the following actions. First, take, uh, conduct a public hearing to receive and tabulate protests on proposed garbage collection fee adjustments in franchise area three, which includes unincorporated Placer County from Donner Lake to the Nevada State Line. Two, approve the Sixth Amendment to the Solid Waste Handling Service Agreement with Placer County Eastern Regional Landfill Link and Tahoe Truckee Disposal. To modify Tahoe Truckee Disposal garbage collection fees in franchise area two and three, modify tipping fees collected at the Eastern Regional Material Recovery Facility, and modify processing fees paid to, uh, Placer County Eastern Regional Landfill Link. And then third, make a finding pursuant to Public Resource Code, Section 21080B8, that the fees are derived directly from the cost of providing service and are necessary to meet operating expenses required for maintenance of service, and are therefore exempt from environmental review. So that's the end of the presentation, but if you guys have any questions, I'll have to answer.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? I don't see any lights, so we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item prior to the board considering the tabulation of the vote and possibly taking action? Okay, we'll close public hearing. What is the, uh, result of the protests?
Two-hundred-and-six protests were received, which is not a majority.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this time, the, the board is in a position where, should we so choose, we can approve the Sixth Amendment, uh, to the Solid Waste Handling Services Agreement, and move forward with modifying the, uh, the collection of the fees and the tipping fees. What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Augustin, you have question or comment?
I was just going to make a motion.
You're certainly welcome to do that.
To approve the Sixth Amendment to the agreement.
Okay. Uh, concurrent with that, why don't we also include the finding?
Do both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't we go ahead and do that?
And we'll make that finding pursuant to Public Resources Code 21080B8, that the fees are derived directly from the cost of providing service.
Great, thank you very much. Should we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, Augustin, Second Gore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our nine-ten, twenty timed item is, uh, the Alpine Sierra subdivision. Boy, Mr. Fish will be leading our conversation on this. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Euler, members of the board. Uh, oh, the mic's on now.
It is on, yes. Yes, yes.
My name is Alex Fish. I am a supervising planner with the Planning Services Division, and I'm the project manager for the Alpine Sierra subdivision project. Uh, before I begin staff's presentation, I want to take a moment to introduce other county staff, our EIR consultant, the applicant, as well as responsible agency staff that we have in attendance as technical resources. Uh, to my left is the applicant, Chris Nelson, his primary planning consultant, Doug Clyde, uh, also a fire planning expert. Catherine Waugh of Dudek Environmental, she's our environmental consultant. Um, also have Chief Michael Schwartz of the North Tahoe Fire Protection District, Division Chief Todd Conradson, and Eric Hornfett, the Forest Fuels Coordinator, and I believe John Collins with Alpine Springs, there you are, John, Alpine Springs County Water District is in attendance. Uh, they are technical resources to assist us today.
I think it might be easier if you just have those who aren't stand up. That would probably be.
That's right. Hey, I, I want to make sure we're well covered. Uh, so after I deliver staff's presentation, uh, the applicant has a short presentation they'd like to make, uh, to go over their planning effort and their ownership history. Uh, and I also, uh, brought the North Tahoe Fire Protection Division staff, uh, to make a short presentation on the technical aspects incorporated into the project for the emergency preparedness planning. So with that, staff is bringing to the board the Planning Commission's, uh, recommendation on the following actions, uh, to certify the Alpine Sierra subdivision final environmental impact report, approve a rezoning and general plan amendment, approve a tentative subdivision map, and approve a conditional use permit for a planned residential development. As we can see here, uh, this is the project location. We're about twelve miles south of the town of Truckee, five miles northwest of Tahoe City, more specifically about three miles up on Alpine Meadows Road from the Alpine Meadows Road, uh, State Route 89 interchange. This is the Alpine Meadows Ski Area, uh, immediately, uh, south of the project. Bear Creek Association subdivision to the immediate northwest, and then this is the Ginston Access Road Chalet, uh, road area here. Uh, in January 2013, the applicant submitted applications for the project, uh, which was at that time proposed to include a total of forty-seven lots. This here is the illustrative for that original project. It is referred to as Alternative A in the EIR. Uh, the county circulated a notice of preparation for that project in April of 2014. Um, that project, as I said, it consisted of twenty-seven, uh, state lots in the eastern portion of the project. This western development pod was to include six cabin lots here, and fourteen attached half-plex units, as well as an HOA maintenance facility and caretaker unit here. Uh, we did receive a number of comments on the notice of preparation. Uh, those covered a variety of topics that we would typically expect, such as noise, traffic, impacts to air quality, biological resources, hydrology, things like that. We also received a substantial number of comments from, uh, neighbors surrounding the project, uh, about the compatibility of it with the adjoining, uh, land uses, and those were mostly centered on this portion of the project area containing the half-plex units and the cabin lots. Uh, so from that, that began a, uh, an exercise between the applicant and the county staff to determine a way to improve upon the project, and the, the first, uh, objective was to develop a, a series of, of objectives to guide, uh, what that alternative project could look like. So number one was to improve the compatibility between the project and adjacent development, uh, prohibit development on sites in excess of thirty percent in compliance with the county general plan, as we had a number of lots that were actually on slopes that were steeper than that, uh, on those lots that had areas that were, uh, less than thirty percent, but had other areas that were over thirty percent to restrict development to those areas that were flatter, uh, reduce the overall project grading and footprint, increase application of low-intensity development standards, uh, which since that time have now been incorporated into county code, increase stream corridor protection area and protection of onsite resources, uh, including retaining ephemeral drainage ways in function to the maximum extent practical, relocating the HOA meeting room to a better location at the eastern portion of the project area, where it would be less constrained. And then to improve, uh, a project emergency, uh, preparedness, uh, rather, improve project emergency preparedness through incorporation of an emergency preparedness and evacuation plan. That was a planning effort undertaken in coordination with North Tahoe Fire. And out of that came this project. This is the, uh, preferred project that is being considered for entitlements today, referred to as Alternative B in the EIR. Uh, not a lot of changes in the eastern development pod over here where we have the estate lots. Previously, there were twenty-seven lots, there are twenty-eight in this version. Uh, this lot is added here. Overall, it follows the same lotting pattern, uh, relatively similar roadway layout, and it is effectively just a more constrained version of that original project. As I said, there's broader setbacks along the stream corridor, more open space incorporated into the project, and its, uh, development aspirations were somewhat, uh, restricted. Uh, the other major change is in the western development pod, where, uh, the fourteen half-plex units and six cabin lots became ten cabin lots. There are also a number of lots that were here that were just eliminated due to steep Um, project-wide adjustments, we would have no mass grading of lots allowed. Any pad grading for homes would step, uh, with topography to limit cut and fill areas to the home footprint and reduce overall grading. Uh, as I said, incorporation of LID improvements, incorporation of dark sky society lighting standards, increased off-street and on-street parking for the project, and incorporation of some other small details like rusted, uh, corten steel, uh, guardrails, uh, natural rockery walls for the project, things that would help it blend in, uh, to the setting and environment better. So on the left here, this is the, uh, pardon me, this is the existing zoning for the project site, and includes a mixture of open space and, uh, residential zoning. Uh, on the right is what the project would be rezoned to, effectively the same zoning designations with slight adjustments as to where the residential zoning would be located, and then incorporation of additional open space. Under the existing zoning, we have about nine acres of open space. Under the proposed project, there would be just short of nineteen acres. Um, if the project was approved, under the existing, uh, general plan land use designations, there's a holding capacity of about a hundred units, and the project would be a thirty-eight-unit This is an example of the cabin lot, uh, housing concept that would be in the western portion of the project. Uh, we expect these, uh, homes would range between probably about three thousand square feet to thirty-five-hundred square feet, probably at, on average, with some homes potentially going up to five thousand, uh, including garage space. In the west, in the, uh, eastern portion of the project, uh, somewhat larger homes, the lots are a little bit bigger, and, uh, those homes could range up to maybe, uh, six, seven thousand square feet, including garage spaces. Just take a moment here and make sure I've covered myself. I have. Um, there is, uh, just a single point of access to the project. Legal access is from Alpine Meadows Road here, and it follows in on this flag, and then would continue throughout the project. Uh, this slide shows the surrounding ownership. Uh, to the east and south, we have Forest Service lands. Um, over the twenty years that the project proponent has owned the property, uh, they've undertaken extensive efforts to negotiate secondary access with their neighbors, including the Forest Service. Um, because the forest, because they already have a legal access, the Forest Service rules prohibit grant of additional access rights to that parcel. I actually have a letter in the file, uh, from the Forest Service attesting to that. And then more significantly to the north, this is the Bear Creek Association, John Scott Trail Road, which runs adjacent to the project here. Um, the applicant undertook extensive efforts before they had ever entered into an entitlement process with the county. And then, uh, at the request of county staff during the preparation of the EIR, uh, we had another, or we, we had requested that the applicant reengage Bear Creek Association on another, uh, negotiation. Ultimately, that fell short of achieving the seventy-five percent supermajority, uh, that the BCA bylaws require for them to approve a secondary access. So to mitigate for this issue caused by the single point of access, uh, the applicant and the county, uh, engaged with North Tahoe Fire Protection District to determine if alternative measures could be incorporated into the project, uh, to improve upon its safety. to determine if alternative measures could be incorporated into the project to improve upon its safety. And with that, we already had one measure that was incorporated. That is a forest management and fuel modification plan. That's something that NTFPD required of the site because of the deteriorated forest condition. It would treat the entire site as defensible space. Basically, you have the structural protection zone around the homes, where there would be no vegetation immediately adjacent to the homes. And then you have the fuel reduction zone, wildland fuel reduction zone for the open space areas. And then the defensible space zone that is immediately adjacent to the home sites. Fuel loads would be modified over the entire project site to treat it as defensible space. The project would also implement the emergency preparedness and protection plan, which was again coordinated with NTFPD, and includes following measures. Internal roads would be maintained by the HOA, and snow removal equipment would be stored onsite. Homes would be constructed using ignition-resistant building materials in accordance with Chapter 7A Building Code requirements. And all homes would include interior and exterior fire sprinklers, including sprinklers to protect the exterior egress locations. The HOA building would be designed and constructed to serve as a shelter-in-place facility for project occupants. And the standards applied to the homes are nearly the same as to the HOA facility, though it does achieve a higher level of defensibility. Signage would be incorporated into the subdivision to indicate evacuation routes, including a variable message electronic changeable copy board that would be activated in the event of an emergency. And we also have incorporated a radio repeater site on off-site water tank location adjacent to the project. That would be a transmitter that the NTFPD, or the sheriff, or OES could activate remotely. There would be national informer transmitter units in each of the homes. These are plug-in units that would be required to be incorporated into each of the project residences. And NTFPD could activate those and broadcast emergency information directly to the homes. And those have battery backup. That system is also available for other folks in the valley to participate in electively. Should they choose to do so, the units are about $500. So next slide shown here, this is just a graphic representation of what the amenity lodge could look like. This is conceptualized as a 3,000-square-foot HOA lodge building. Would also have an employee residence incorporated into it. The lodge itself would have a fitness room, outdoor pool area and spa, picnic areas. And as I said, would also serve as a shelter-in-place facility. The HOA lots would also include overflow parking for residents and guests, and a garage for snow, storage of snow removal and HOA maintenance items. There are a number of community-serving project improvements. At the outset of this project, prior to recordation of the first final map, the project would be required as part of its will-serv agreement with NTFPD to purchase and dedicate a four-wheel-drive Type 1 pumper truck to the district. They would also have to fully fund improvements to upgrade the Alpine Springs County Water District water system. There are zonal pressure deficiencies in three of its service zones, and so pumps B, C, and D would be upgraded to correct for those deficiencies. As I said, the project would implement the emergency preparedness evacuation plan, including the national informer transmitter site, and the forest management and fuel reduction plan, which would improve the level of fire safety at the site and to surrounding neighbors. As I mentioned, the county did prepare an environmental impact report for this project. The EIR was a full-scope EIR. The only items that were scoped out were agricultural resources and cultural resources, because none existed on the site. We did identify feasible mitigation measures for all potentially significant impacts, and with implementation of those mitigation measures, all impacts would be reduced to less than significant. The draft EIR was circulated for a 45-day public comment period that began on September 19, 2017, and ended November 3, 2017. We received a total of 39 comment letters from public agencies, public interest groups, organizations, and private citizens. And in addition, during the Planning Commission's draft EIR hearing, we had nine persons participate in that and provide public comments. We had a total of four alternatives that were evaluated in the EIR. As I mentioned previously, Alternative A, that was the original project. Alternative B was the co-equal project that was analyzed at an equal level to the original project. We also had Alternative C, which is a requirement of any EIR. It's a no-project alternative. What would happen if nothing happened at the site? The alternative, there are two versions of that. The second one is what would happen under the existing zoning. That alternative looks very similar to the Alternative A project. And lastly, we had Alternative D, and this is an environmentally constrained version of Alternative B. It just eliminates an additional three lots, which also eliminates two bridge crossings in the eastern portion of the project here. We, following the preparation of the draft EIR, a final EIR was prepared. Because so many of the comment letters that we received touched on the same resource areas and the same issues, the environmental consultant in the county judged that the most efficient way for the final EIR to be useful would be to prepare master responses. We did prepare 12 comprehensive master responses, touching on all of these resource areas. So there is a trail going through the project. We addressed how that would get relocated and reestablished with the Forest Service. We addressed the visual impacts, biological resources, traffic, emergency preparedness, noise. And I won't go through all these, but they're in the final EIR. Comments that were not specifically responded to by one of those master responses also received an individual response. On November 8 of last year, staff presented this item to the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Council. We did not receive any public comments during that meeting. The NITRAC did have a pretty robust discussion about the efficacy of the emergency preparedness planning efforts that went into the project. Chief Schwartz was at that meeting and was able to address those issues. We also had some comments pertaining to the visual impacts of the project. And again, staff was able to address those issues for the NITRAC members. Following their discussion, they did vote 6 to 0 to recommend approval of the project to the Planning Commission and ultimately to your board. So with that, staff is forwarding the Planning Commission's recommendations. I have them listed here and with their full text, but I'll just touch on them briefly. Certify the Alpine Sierra subdivision final environmental impact report, prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, including adoption of the mitigation monitoring reporting program, supported by the findings of fact, and the ARADA incorporated to the final EIR. Adopt a resolution to amend the Alpine Meadows general plan land use diagram. Adopt an ordinance to rezone the Alpine Sierra subdivision project as shown in your staff report. Approve the Alpine Sierra subdivision vesting tentative subdivision map, and approve a conditional use permit for the planned residential development portion of that project. If it pleases the board, I can answer any questions you may have now, or I can turn it over to Mr. Nelson for his portion of the presentation.
Let's start with any questions that we might have of staff at this point. Any board members have any question prior to the applicant presenting? Okay, I see none. So at this time, let's have the applicant step forward and make his presentation.
Good morning, Chair Euler, board members, and welcome Supervisor Gustafson to the new position. Congratulations. So I appreciate the opportunity to spend a few minutes. Alex obviously gave a good technical overview of the project and its, what it comprises. But I just wanted to buzz through a little history of our ownership and our intent for the project. And then I will hand it over to North Tahoe Fire Protection District, who has some comments. So this has been a long journey for our partnership. We acquired the property in December of 1997. My wife and I at the time lived in Reno, Nevada, and we had a cabin at Bear Creek right next door to the property between '95 and '99. I was working for a national real estate company at the time that moved me to Portland, and a few years later started my own firm, Capstone Partners. So I've been a property developer for about 30 years. Most of my work focuses on urban-type projects, and that's a big reason why I'll introduce Doug Clyde in a bit. But we hired a best-in-class group of consultants to help us work through this project, because it does have some technical challenges that we've been working on. And I'd like to point out that my general philosophy and culture towards approaching projects is one that's responsible and one that incorporates best practices for new state-of-the-art developments. I'm a big proponent and believer of the Urban Land Institute and the work they do and the new incoming chair for the Portland-Southwest Washington chapter this summer. In simple sort of terms, the business plan and the approach for this is to develop a very low-density, environmentally-sensitive project that's compatible with the adjoining neighborhood. And importantly, I'll talk a little bit about the unique partnership with North Tahoe Fire, but we believe this is an opportunity to turn this project into a model example of a fire-safe community. Alex touched on some of the low-impact development standards, best management practices. This is just an image of a building on a steeper slope that is not just bulldozed. It's sort of manicured and carved into the site. So those development standards, in addition to architectural guidelines that we put together with our architect Dale Cox, make sure that the homes fit into the land. Alex did point out the open space. This project will have more open space than any other subdivision in the Alpine Meadows area, and is over two times what's required by your code. Alex, I think, covered the product types. I would point out that the average home sites on the east are the larger 28 home sites, or .65 acres. The ones to the west are about .29 acres and are very similar to the adjoining neighborhood Bear Creek Association, Alpine Estates, the typical sort of lot sizes. So the density is quite low. I'm a big believer in outreach. Unfortunately, in this case, we weren't able to come to a complete win-win with our neighbors. It wasn't for a lack of trying. As I mentioned, we owned the property for over 20 years, had countless meetings with the Bear Creek folks, but also Chalet Townhome HOA, Alpine Estates HOA. Junior Per Mountain made presentations to all of those groups, have had lead hikes with representatives of residents of those HOAs on the property. And as Alex mentioned, we actually did stop and put a pause on our project for a year to try to negotiate a project alternative that we called the BCA alternative with Bear Creek, and it just didn't get the support. In addition to that, we've done a lot of public agency outreach over the years. John Collins, the general manager, Alpine Springs County Water District Board, is here today. When we were prosecuting the attempt to get secondary access from the Forest Service, we actually worked with Placer County Sheriff's Office. Larry Haywood's here tonight, today, our avalanche consultant, and we worked on a plan. And we were pretty excited about it. Unfortunately, the Forest Service wasn't allowed to let us pursue that. In 2010, we re-engaged with the staff and also with North Tahoe Fire to move forward on this project. We received will-serv letters in 2014. And I'd say that, at that point, the project incorporated a lot of the public-serving comment, features that Alex pointed out, but there were some new features that Chief Schwartz and his team brought to the table. And we worked with my consultant Doug Clyde, who's the owner of Mount Resort Consulting, to come up with some new, more state-of-the-art tools to incorporate into the project. Doug is currently vice-chair in the County Council of Summit County. He resides in Utah. But Doug has a long history in the Tahoe area, having worked at Alpine Meadows between '72 and 2001. He's worked on a lot of projects that have sort of dynamic characteristics and challenging Alpine environments. And in fact, he was hired by North Tahoe Fire to help North Tahoe Fire design a shelter-in-place plan for the homestead community up here. I also have, we did, Alex mentioned, we have some technical consultants here. Larry Haywood's here to address any questions on avalanche issues. Sarah Holly with LSC Transportation is also here. Patrick Longden, our civil engineer. And I'd say that part of that's just, you know, I have a big belief I was an Eagle Scout, and I'm a big believer in being prepared. And so from our perspective, when the fire department asked us to consider, and the staff, putting together an emergency preparedness and evacuation plan, much like Squaw Valley and Martis Camp had done, it was clearly the right thing to do. And it was a good year-long effort. And many of the things that we've done since the original will-serv letters were issued in 2014 are reflected here, and North Tahoe Fire will talk a little bit about that shortly. But I think Alex touched on most of them, so I'm not going to go into a lot more detail on that. But I would say there are a few visuals here that kind of give you a better idea of how things will work. So the national informer transmitter system is an idea North Tahoe brought to us. We will find a new antenna that will go on Alpine Springs County Water District easement above our property. All homes in our project will be required to have receivers, and it's a little image of a technology that's available. But the nice public benefit is all residents in the Alpine Meadows Valley will have access to that early warning system and the national informer system. It'll not only be wired into North Tahoe Fire's command center, but also the county's emergency alert system. This is another visual of the shelter-in-place facility and layout of the site that Alex referenced. There'll be signage for evacuations, but in some cases, and North Tahoe Fire will talk about this, evacuation is not the right thing to do. The homes will serve as a first shelter-in-place alternative, but we also will have hardened facilities in the HOA buildings for the community to also shelter in place if necessary. And there's a little bit of a blow-up of that site plan. There's also the bend at the bottom there with a purple X shows where there is actually room for a helicopter for emergency placement. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to North Tahoe Fire Division Chief Todd Conrithson and Forester Eric Hornvett are here to talk a little bit more technically.
Before you do that, let me just see. First of all, if you did, I missed it, I apologize. But if you didn't, would you please state your name for the record?
Yes, Chris Nelson.
Thank you very much. Any board members have any questions, Mr. Nelson, at this time? I don't see any questions, so we'll go ahead and hear from the fire chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Or someone other than the chief, I'm guessing, just based on age.
Chair, board, good morning. I, Eric Hornvett, Forest Fuels Coordinator with North Tahoe Fire. I'm here mainly to, I'll be speaking on behalf of their forest management fuel reduction plan and tying in the shelter-in-place, the community that they're proposing here. I just want to start with saying that, you know, Tahoe's, our wake-up call was after the Angora Fire, 2007. We were over a decade aware and active in forest management, defensible space, community outreach, education, evacuation, emergency preparedness. And, you know, as a district, we really feel that the Alpine Sierra subdivision is the type of plans that is going to be going to other board supervisors in this state. They put together a very robust forest management and fuel reduction plan in 2014. Forester David Paramillo did a great job. You know, he addressed securing forest health and resilience to disease and fire. Those are the two calamities that area forests that we live in is going to face, is disease and fire. And so this forest management and fuel reduction plan is going to be put in place concurrently to carry out fuel reduction before structures are built. Some of the first phase 1s will be addressing the very high fuel hazard concerns, hazard trees, those phases. And before construction is posed from phase 1 and phase 2, that acreage will be treated. So what this is going to do is it's going to secure understory fuel reductions, it's going to remove those ladder fuels, it'll reduce competition, allow the forest stand to be more resilient to drought, insects, and fire. The most kind of comprehensive piece of this is going to be, that the whole area is going to be looked at as defensible space. So it is going to be almost as robust of a treatment as we can put in, understanding that we do need to secure wildlife, soil conditions, some of these environmental concerns as well. And to put it into kind of some point terms is that a complete compliance with 4291 Public Resource Code for Defensible Space will be carried out for all structures. It will be mandated for annual inspections by North Tahoe Fire staff to complete every year. Along with those inspections, we'll also be carrying out an annual site fuel hazard analysis and identifying any other hazard trees that may be on site. So these are going to be annual things that Alpine Sierra subdivision wants to do, and it's in their forest management fuel reduction plan that they are going to do. it's in their Forest Management Fuel Reduction Plan that they're going to do it concurrently with project development and throughout, you know, the life of this development. Now, we're going to be looking at some of the top, you know, a lot of things that come out right now is these notice of non-renewals for insurance, we're asking people for 10-feet canopy separation between branch tip to branch tip of trees, and that's already identified in their plan as well. So when you're in that structure ignition zone, you're going to see canopy separation that would really mimic, you know, early 1900s pictures of what our forests look like. You know, as John Muir described it, their forests, you could ride a horse through. Your hat wouldn't be hitting branches, your stirrups wouldn't be getting caught on brush and lower trees. So, you know, they really are trying to mimic what our forests should look like if fire was kept as a driving force in our ecosystem. And they're doing this to protect the home ignition zone. They're really creating this robust canopy separation and defensible space requirement coupled with the UWI Chapter 7A building for ignition-resistant construction, that all of these, you're going to have an area where, you know, we're hoping home ignition, you know, is not going to be very feasible. These homes are going to be the first level of shelter in place, and if needed, they're going to have an even more robust shelter-in-place building for the community members to go. Talking into that, they're also looking into, you know, becoming part of the Fire Safe Council. Alpine Meadows has had some Fire Safe Council representation throughout the years, and, you know, we're going to be requiring that, you know, they jump on with that Alpine Fire Safe Council, be a part of that, and also go through the Fire Wise USA. This is an NFPA recognition, and complete that annual recognition every year, so there'll also be a nationally-recognized Fire Wise site. Like I said, to go back, is that really the important piece of this Forest Management Fuel Reduction Plan is that the planning, the permitting, and the implementation of it is concurrent. They're not going to be building homes and then saying, "Oh, we have a forest health, we have a fire problem here." They're addressing these problems before these structures are being built. And that's something we don't see now. We don't even see it with the sale of a home right now. So I think it's very important to see that, you know, they're hitting a lot of these social concerns that we're seeing right now, and they talked about these back in 2014, wanting to do all this concurrently. So I think that brings a lot of light to the amount of planning, extensive research they've really put into this. And, you know, this research is based on, it's really aggressive, fire-science-based research. This research, a lot of it was conducted by Jack Cohen in the '80s at the Missoula Fire Science Lab by the US Forest Service. And so they took this tiered-strategy approach of how do you reduce the home ignition zone? How do you modify the fuel within that structure-protection zone so that you're not going to have radiant or convective direct flame impingement on the homes? How do you address the ember fallout and fires? This is the Chapter 7A UWI Building Code. They're addressing that. And then they're also wanting to secure forest health, fire resilience across the entire project area, all 47 acres. So, you know, as far as from a forester perspective, it's carrying out forest management plans for our district and looking at, you know, defensible space, looking with homeowners every day. This project is, they're ahead of the curve that we're seeing in California right now, and they have my support.
Any board members have any questions? I don't see any. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. My name is Todd Conradson. I'm a Division Chief and Fire Marshal with North Tahoe, Meeks Bay, and Alpine Meadows Fire. And didn't mean to mix it up on you guys, we start off with Eric, because the Forest Fuels Management is one of the key items that will allow this to be a fire-safe community and shelter-in-place. So the actual fire chief will be following me next to finish this up. But I'm just going to touch on a couple topics and answer any questions, either as we go along or at the end. But I was going to address the early warning and notification, and then the shelter-in-place concept and some of the building construction that goes along with that. So as we've all heard, the last two years have been the most destructive fire seasons in California history. And with that, two problems that were identified through those was lack of early warning and notifications, instructions to the public. And then, once they even had that, they had no place to go or didn't know where to go. And so when we were reviewing this project and in light of some of that stuff, the fire chief actually came up with the idea, a great idea, is to incorporate a new kind of notification system, a little separate than what's out there in place now. You might have heard of Nixle or Everbridge or the Reverse 911, these phone calls where they give a message out there. Those aren't always effective for various reasons, whether cell phones go down or whatever that may be. So we thought that if we incorporated utilizing the same radio systems that we rely on as first responders, I think it gives us a better opportunity to provide timely and important instructions to the people. So this device, this device here, this particular one is made by Federal Signal. What this does, it's tone-activated. There's an antenna at the top of Alpine Meadows, and our radio techs have already kind of covered the area to see what the coverage is, and from that location, we pretty much cover all of the valley. That's a benefit to the rest of the community. All of these will be installed in all the buildings at Alpine Sierra. And like they mentioned, it'll be available to everybody else as well. So how this works is there's a radio antenna up at the top. This device is tone-activated. We can activate the tones from our stations or fire control room at the project. And once activated, we can speak lifetime voice through our radios over this and give instructions to people on what to do or how to warn them. And one of the things to consider, too, is that depending on where the emergency is, and say it's a fire in Alpine Meadows, if it's somewhere in the middle, the instructions to some of the people in Alpine Meadows may be to go to the ski area and go to a safety zone at the ski area parking lot. Other ones that may be lower will direct them to evacuate, try to get them on the roads and get them out of there. Alpine Sierra will shelter in place in the event of a fire, and we believe it's totally capable, and here's why. Like Eric explained, the aggressive, science-based fuel modifications, once we get the fire on the ground, it's not going to experience a flaming front like we've seen in some of the news footage and things that we've seen in the past. By getting it on the ground, it's less intensity. Some of the other things that happened in those fires was house-to-house ignition. The close proximity of homes ignited each other, so. We're looking at adequate separation between the buildings. They're going to have fire-resistant construction that meets or exceeds current codes. And then probably the best thing to this whole community is that they're going to have their clubhouse, or the one building that they have there. It's a Type 1A construction. So for those that don't know what that is, it's actually the most fire-resistant construction that's out there. It's considered non-combustible. It's large enough to put everybody in there and capable of housing all the residents and guests of this whole subdivision. We've all seen the traffic on busy ski weekends and stuff. In the event of evacuation and depending how many people are going to go there, we expect roads to be congested. And we're working out different plans to try to get both lanes, everybody out of here. We're doing the best we can on the pre-planning. But the best thing with a concern of adding more congestion to the road is that we want them off of the road, staying in place, not finding themselves stranded in the middle of the road and then all of a sudden trying to outrun a fire on foot. The way that this project's designed between fuels, notification, and building construction, and the availability of the shelter-in-place building itself, we believe that this probably provides for the safest project in our area. And I could go on with more details, but I think that covers it pretty much, and I'm happy to answer any questions for you or to the fire chief.
Supervisor Wagon.
Yeah, so compliments to both of the presentations by fire professionals and the project for the work that you've done. But I've actually studied the fire force management issue by way of the air pollution and the impact of air quality on catastrophic wildfires on air quality, and our APCD has done some unusual modeling in that regard for a range of reasons. So the shelter-in-place concept, I guess my question is driven towards what is the condition of, I get the idea and I'm a strong proponent of treating the project site, and I believe strongly that that actually has a huge impact on the ability to deter and constrain catastrophic fires. What's the area around the project site, like the forest conditions? So I'm thinking, for example, I know I had verified after the campfire sadly burned the town of Paradise, it continued on and reached a site that had been treated by Sierra Pacific Industries, and that fire even went down to the ground when it reached the treated site. So I'm thinking of the fire burning in and around the area and how much space you need around the project site to protect even the project site, even if it's treated, and what the forest looks like on the Forest Service site to the south and to the east, and if you could just generally describe that for me.
Sure, yeah, I understand your question. And all of the adjoining areas, some need a lot of work, some need some work, some are better than others. The areas that are directly surrounding that, some of it being Forest Service land, we actually tried to work with the Forest Service to get some fuel modification, some reduction work done out there. And at the time, the Forest Service wasn't in a position, for whatever rules they have, to treat those fuels. However, we do know that the Forest Service does have programs in place, sometimes referred to as like Good Shepherd agreements, to where other people that are impacted are allowed to do work on adjoining properties to further reduce the danger of those fuels coming into, like this populated area. We expect that to be able to happen in the future. I can't speak to that as a guarantee today. It's kind of up to the Forest Service, and they all have their rules, but we try to pursue that. But what we do know is that what we can do within this project is as much as possible to actually put the fire on the ground, make those fuel breaks, and to keep them out of the structures on that. Now, there's other areas that surround that, that we are going to be focusing this year in many of our areas, especially Alpine Meadows, to actually start enforcing the Public Resource Code 4291, those defensible space things. And it's up to the property line, but we're going to try to get 100 feet, and when all these people do that, we'll have that. So Alpine Meadows as a whole, if we can limit the amount of fire, whether it starts in a structure and spreads to the wildland, or it's wildland fire that extends to structures, we're going to be targeting those areas in order to do all the defensible space to make it as safe as possible. Beyond that, to answer your question, I'd have to ask Eric to come back up, because our Forest Fuels Coordinator is much well-versed in the fuel types that are around there, the proximity of those, the canopies, to address that, if you'd like.
Sure. You're great. I, Eric Hornvett, Forest Fuels Coordinator with North Tahoe Fire. So to address that question, right now, that is the Tahoe National Forest is the jurisdiction there. They are under a new NEPA document. They're hoping to have that in hand here this summer, so they just wrote NEPA for that whole section of their Ranger District. So there is going to be new NEPA coverage there. Also, I guess, combined between the Lake Tahoe West Collaborative, I'm in the middle of a programmatic timberland environmental impact report process for the California side of the Lake Tahoe Basin extending into Alpine, is that these two landscape-level programmatic, you know, one's a project, one's a programmatic environmental impact report, we could tier off them for projects, would provide streamlined environmental project permitting on these lands. And we are actually looking into allowing this PTR document to allow treatment on federal lands. So there is a lot of pieces in play. You know, I serve as a liaison with the Forest Service almost every day through some of my projects, so, you know, I am in touch, and once that NEPA document is in place, there is a lot of areas around Alpine Meadows, our district, being contracted there, that is areas that, you know, I want to be able to kind of highlight, hey, we need treatments here outside of, these communities are doing a lot of defensible space work, subdivision, you know, if they're doing forest fuel reduction work, let's keep these projects, you know, cohesive. Let's combine efforts where we can, carry these treatments out as much as possible. In regards to fuels, almost the whole project site's a fuel model 10. If you're not familiar, a fuel model 10 is basically mature overstory trees, so you've got, you know, Jeffrey pine red fur overstory, underfir, understory of white fir, you know, with quite a bit of down and dead fuel loading. So, you know, the fire threat is there. Fuel model 10 is what the majority of the forests in, you know, high elevation California look like, you know, that have not been treated. So, yeah, the threat's there, you know, they're really addressing it very well with this project. And, you know, they even have it in their Forest Management Fuel Reduction Plan. It's already in there, that they need to carry out a stewardship agreement with the Forest Service to extend the defensible space zone onto the Forest Service land, as many feet as the Forest Service stewardship agreement will allow. And that responsibility will fall on the homeowner or the HOA, depending how Alpine Sierra Subdivision, you know, kind of wants to play with those pieces. But there's definitely a lot of ball rolling to try to keep these treatments out into the forest land and not leave it just as the subdivision.
Supervisor Gustafson, did you have a question?
I sure did. Chief, I think this radio, the early warning system is fabulous, and it's incredible resource, and I just want to know how we can expand it throughout the region.
You know, we totally agree. In fact, when the chief came up with this idea, we started looking at other applications for this in areas like up canyons where maybe limited cell coverage, things like that. War Canyon comes to mind, areas like that. This is kind of a springboard to some really good things on how we're going to approach projects in the future, as far as fuel modifications, the construction, and especially the early warning. We'd like to see this incorporated everywhere in our district. Granted, it takes a little bit of infrastructure, I don't know how that's going to be coming into county. Alpine Springs County Water District allowed the site for that antenna to go up. This project is funding all of the infrastructure, and we're excited to see how that's going to work. And we're actually going to test the system once it's in and kind of get an idea of how many people will be utilizing those, and then hopefully we can expand that to other areas of our district. Not sure when that will happen, but we think it's a great idea that's kind of superior to what's out there now.
Absolutely. And with all the dead zones we have in our cell phones and the issues we had a couple years ago with losing cell towers during those storms, and, you know, having a radio system and repeaters or whatever you would need infrastructure-wise to serve those areas would be incredibly important in these emergencies.
Yeah, because our radios, if it works well enough for us, we know it's going to work well for the community. There's very few spots where we have limited to no radio coverage. There's usually something, and it's areas that aren't populated, too. So we're thinking that this could be a really great thing for the future.
I see no other questions.
Right.
Well, good morning, Supervisors. Chairman Euler, welcome Cindy Gustafson to, as our supervisor, glad to have you. I was going to hold my comments to you, but I'm just going to touch on a couple things now, and then feel free to call me up if you have any questions.
I need your name for the record, please.
Pardon me?
Your name for the record, please.
Michael Schwartz, I'm the fire chief for North Tahoe Fire, Alpine Meadows and Meeks Bay area. And I've been in the area serving for about 37 years, so I've got a little background here, fire in most of these different areas. The only thing I think I'll touch on, just for a brief section, Alex, can you bring your slide back that showed kind of the overview of the project along with the roadway in? Because, you know, the elephant in the room is the single-way in, single-way out, right? We've been working on it for 15 or 20 years. And what I would start to say is, yeah, I like everybody else. I like two ways in, two ways out, and I think it makes most sense. But I would tell you that most of the communities that I serve are not one-way in, one-way out, almost all the canyons I deal with. So as far as providing fire protection in these areas, I'm pretty good at it. What's interesting about this is if you had built this originally and had its two-way in, two-way out, it'd be a 20-foot-wide road, and it would tie into Bear Creek subdivision. Bear Creek subdivision is a pretty classic old environment that has, you know, 10 or 12-foot-wide roads, bridges that we can't cross with fire engines, and a gate that is usually not open. So it does not provide great egress/ingress. I would probably argue that the 26-foot road with the improved shoulders with the safe zones provides equal or better access into that new subdivision that's being proposed. If you can see here, I'm not sure, this shows it exactly, there's a part of the Alpine Sierra subdivision that abuts a woodcutting lot that's owned by Bear Creek. And I believe that once this is built, and this road is such an improvement for egress, that maybe cooler heads will prevail, and we can tie these subdivisions together. Because I think at the end of the day, when this is all done, the folks who live below it in Bear Creek need this road just as much as the new homes that are going to be built. So I think if there's a community, there's a community enhancement piece to this that's easily lost when you're just looking at this without seeing the surrounding area. And other than that, if you have any questions now, I'd be glad to answer, otherwise I'll come back later if you have something.
I don't see any questions.
All right. Well, thanks for having us.
Thank you. Alex, does that conclude the staff and applicant presentation?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Any board members have questions for either staff or the applicant before we open it up to the public? Okay, seeing no questions by board members at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item, please step forward, identify yourself, try to keep your comments to three minutes. Good morning, you can pull that down, there you go.
My name's Trish White, I've been an Alpine Meadows resident for 40 years. And the one thing that I have not seen addressed in any appreciable way is the one road into this whole project, all of the equipment that's going to be coming through a subdivision, a residential subdivision, construction equipment, I mean, that's huge. This is a very narrow road and the impact on the neighbors and the people in that area. What are they going to do about that?
Well, you just address your comment to the board and when we're done, we'll have staff address those. Thank you very much. Anyone else, yes, good morning. It will adjust up, there you go.
Good morning, my name's Michael Wilson. I am a homeowner in the neighborhood. I'm one of the many people in the neighborhood that are adamantly against this project. It's trying to stuff a Mardis Camp-style subdivision in a white-collar neighborhood. There's a reason why it didn't fly with the Bear Creek Homeowners Association and the Alpine Meadows Association. The roads are small in our area, 10 to 12 feet wide as mentioned. We don't want, it's a dog-walking community, it's very small, it's very quiet, something I envisioned in my upcoming retirement for peace and tranquility. This whole project puts a big damper on the ambiance of my retirement, to say the least. But more importantly, besides the, our peace and tranquility in our neighborhood being destroyed for the next 10, 15 years, this is in direct violation of Placer County Code Section 1754, 100 Section C, 1D. And you should address that law that you passed in the past here. And really, you should postpone this vote, at least 90 days to get, let Supervisor Gustafson get up to speed on this and address this violation code that's being proposed. Also, there's many trails and roads that are in question and many other cumulative impacts on this area. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Robert Cole. I have, my wife and I own two cabins in Alpine Meadows, one for ourselves and one for our adult children. I'm a little intimidated speaking to you after all this high-powered professional exposition because I do very, very much, I have worked in the past with the Placer County planning staff and I, sorry to disagree with them here because they are very, very professional and very able. I have two points to make, they're interrelated, and I realize they're radical, but I think that I've made these points throughout the process and I really think, I would really think the supervisors ought to think about them and maybe talk these issues over with the developer. The first point is that what the EIR does is to disaggregate the problem. They take every detail of the proposed project and they analyze it in isolation. And then they come up with mitigations for each of these particular isolated problems. And that's all to the good. But there's no consideration, and I've read the EIR, or maybe I'm wrong, there's no consideration of the overall effect of this new big development on the community. And there's no, this is 46 acres of forest that are just going to be gone, essentially gone. And 38 houses are going to come in there in a very cramped area. And this is bound to change our whole community, but there's no real discussion of that in the EIR. And similarly, there's no discussion of how this project accumulates with other projects that are on the table, White Wolf, the Gondola, the urbanization of Squaw Valley, the dormant Alpine Knolls project. So what's needed is to step back and, you know, if you're going to do land use planning, you have to think about the overall effect, not just how each problem can be solved in isolation. And I don't think that's done here. And it seems to me that we ought to ask for something more by way of getting an overall, an understanding of the overall impact. The second point is that in order for, is it, my time is up?
Those are your three minutes, try to conclude your thoughts, sir, shortly.
The second point is that a project like this has to be, you know, it is going to impose enormous costs, no matter what. It's going to put an end to this forest, it's going to create external effects. It has to be justified, at least to some degree. And right now, I don't think, and this of course interferes in a way with the developer's business judgment, I don't think this is, that those 27 homes at the moment are predictably viable. Alpine Knolls subdivision, which you approved some years ago, that called for 27 homes, it never got off the ground. I don't think people are going to be comfortable, in spite of all the wonderful work the fire district has done, I don't think people are going to want to build multimillion-dollar homes, thinking that in a fire, they have to go hunker down in a bunker. I'm just not sure of this. So I'm very dubious about that, I'm not an expert on it. But what I do think is that it would be prudent to worry about the viability of this project. And the prudent thing to do, it seems to me, at the moment, would be to approve the condos at the western end, which is an area that's already developed. And then, if it turns out to be viable, that a bigger project can be built and an environmental statement, a report is adequate to deal with it, it can be approved. But for now, I think a prudent course would be, just to start with this separate Phase A, which will, at least for the time being and maybe forever, preserve the forest. It has no serious problems of fire problems, and it won't create a lot of unforeseen, unknown overall effects.
Thank you very much, your comments. Anybody else want to address the board? There are a couple chairs open right down front. If there's anybody else that would like to address the board, please feel free to come and occupy one of those chairs. Morning.
Good afternoon. My name's Peggy Heidelberger-Smith. Homeowner and resident, 40 years in Alpine Meadows. I did not come with anything prepared, but I can't sit there and not at least express, and I should have been on board several years ago when this started. We already have a housing shortage. I don't want to offend anybody, but I'm going to say it. These homes aren't for any of the locals. The size, the amount, who are we bringing in? Who can afford these gigantic homes? That's number one. I think the fire, the fire system is great, however, we living maybe a mile from River Ranch already have like our ideas of what to do in case of a fire, because we've been there for 40 years. To allow us to know ahead of time would be great, but still, the roads are small. It's going to be a jam, and I don't know how you're going to blend these additional people and cars in our current community. It is not going to work. Do any of you live in Alpine Meadows? I'm sorry, I do, and I don't want to see this, I mean, change is fine, but this is gigantic. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Douglas Witt. I own and live a home in Alpine Meadows, have for some time. First of all, you have to appreciate the fact that we've got people dealing with fire up here who are really great, and I want to appreciate that. But I do have a couple comments, one very technical. There'll be measures taken to remove vegetation. I'd like to make sure that somebody has considered the impact of that on avalanche. They're basically opposed goals. You want trees to prevent avalanches, and you don't want the trees for the concern on fire. I'd like to have somebody address that concern. A second point I would make is that I think the people adjacent to this project have already spoken. You don't hear them speak now, but this has been a project opposed by the owners in that area for some time, as evidenced by the commentary from the developer. They're not getting cooperation from any homeowners organization in any respect. And it should be very clear that despite the fact that they haven't spoken at this meeting, they're opposed to it collectively. I would really like to hear a comment, however, on the technical issue of the, I'd like to see a comment made that the measures that are being taken by this project in no way affect the additional risk of avalanche in the adjoining properties. That hasn't been stated? If it's true, great. If it's not, that's something to consider seriously.
Thank you.
I would second the motion that there be a delay in consideration for this because of the new member to the board and because of some of the issues raised. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else want to address the board on this item? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close public hearing, bring it back to the board. I'd asked staff if you want to take a moment to address some of the concerns that were raised there, particularly the last gentleman's comment about the avalanche potential when you're removing the undergrowth and those things.
Certainly I can. And I also would point out that we have Larry Haywood, he's the avalanche expert. But just briefly, I'll point out, there are three avalanche zones that affect the project, one of which is at the project entry, that's a much larger zone that incorporates the ski hill slope to the west. And then there are two small areas within the project, I should say three. There's one over here, this is all open space zoning, there would be no homes, so there is no effect based on that. And as Mr. Hornvett pointed out earlier, while the fuel modification to the site will remove trees, it will not remove all trees. So we're not going to see a scenario where all trees are removed and suddenly you have new avalanche zones that are created as a consequence. So this area in the far southeast corner of the project site, that's an open space area. The avalanche zone stops short of any of the housing units. The gentleman, Mr. Witt, that spoke was concerned about avalanche areas on the project site that due to modifications could affect off-site properties. The only one where that would really have any potential is in this area over here. The head of the avalanche slope is on the south side of the road, and Mr. Haywood could speak to this much better than I, but effectively, in Mr. Haywood's judgment, as I understand it in his report, when this roadway comes through here, it effectively cuts off the head of the avalanche formation area. And because of the snow removal activities that would happen, and a lot of that snow gets removed and stored down slope, that mixes the snow into uneven aged snowpack, which again anchors it and prevents the formation of dangerous slab avalanche conditions. And if you want a more technical, kind of a response, I'm sure Mr. Haywood would be happy to provide that. Larry, you want to head on up there?
Alex has described the situation very well.
We do need your name for the record.
My name is Larry Haywood, and I am the avalanche hazard consultant that's been hired
Thank you.
by Mr. Spencer. And in any event, there are three avalanche areas within or adjacent to the property that may run onto the property. At the entrance, at the road, there are avalanche paths that the ski area currently controls, Alpine Meadows ski area currently controls, that are to the west of the, to the project and run onto the Alpine Meadows road and may in fact run onto the creek area where the access road would cross. That will be managed by the ski area and during the periods when the ski area is doing avalanche control, access to that area will be closed. Usually this is a temporary thing for a half hour or so. In the middle of the project, as he pointed out, there's a knoll that's much smaller than this room essentially, that is hypothetically, you might say, an avalanche path. There's no evidence of avalanches occurring there, but it certainly, given the terrain type, has the potential to have avalanches. The, it's probably, I don't recall specifically, but no more than 100 feet vertical. And when the road is cut across this, it's basically a rock outcropping with some small cliffs. When the road is cut across this, I believe that it will essentially negate any more avalanche development because the slope will no longer be continuous or steep. And then in the lower right-hand corner, in the southeast corner, there are some relatively large avalanche paths well off property that can run onto the southeast corner of the property. I spent a fair amount of time mapping these areas, I believe they're in my report, and none of the proposed development site will be within those avalanche runout zones. So to answer Mr. Witt's concern, there is really, other than the small knoll in the middle, there is no actual avalanche starting zones on the property at all. It's not steep enough. And so there will be no increase in, through fuel reduction, there will be no increase in avalanche problems. Unknown is off-property, but I think that I have already mapped the maximum extent of those runouts for those avalanche paths and where they would affect the property. So there'll be no roads or structures within any of those areas.
And the fuel reduction on that piece, particularly that extends the southeast corner, where it appears that that is one of the runout areas, that fuel reduction, you don't think extends the distance of the runout such that an avalanche would then be able to move all the way into the developed area?
I think that's unlikely. Generally speaking, these runout zones and the avalanche paths themselves are fairly, have thin forest cover because of the effects of avalanches. So they've already been, you might say, thinned naturally.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, any other points that were raised that you want to address?
Certainly, just a couple. The one raised by Mr. Wilson, I believe he was referring to a section, not only of our zoning code, but that is covered in your report. And it's pertaining to projects requiring two points of legal access when a dead-end roadway would exceed a certain length. And there are provisions in the code that enable the planning commission as it's listed and ultimately the board to make a judgment that although the roadways would exceed that maximum dead-end length, there are other provisions that provide an equivalent level of safety into the project. And obviously, we had a lot of discussion about that today, so I won't repeat those items. And then, I think there was one other comment by, I believe it was Trish, and I apologize if I didn't get your last name, but she was discussing construction impacts, traffic if I didn't get your last name, but she was discussing construction impacts, traffic impacts, from construction vehicles passing through the subdivision. She didn't reference what subdivision she was intending to, or at least not that I caught. But I would just point out that the project has direct access to a county-maintained roadway. That is its only point of access, and that county-maintained roadway does not pass directly through any existing developed subdivision. Obviously, in later phases, this is a three-phase project. Other phases of the project would be affected by construction, but no off-site properties would be directly affected by that traffic.
All right. Any board members have any additional questions or comments? Supervisor Guffsterson?
I had a couple. Thanks. Alex, I think there was an issue brought up on housing, and I don't think you articulated the affordable housing requirement or employee housing requirement on this project.
My apologies. So the project does, because it's a Tahoe area project, it does, it is subject to the general plan policies pertaining to provision of employee housing. The way the project is conditioned is that it mimics what the general plan language is as far as being able to provide housing on-site, dedicate land needed for units, pay an in-lug fee if one existed, or deed-restrict off-site units. The project during Phase Two does have an employee housing unit that is planned and built into the project that will, that is going to, you know, we don't have the final numbers at this point, but we anticipate it will take care of 60 to maybe 70% of the overall employee housing demand. And then the remainder of that would be taken up by one of those other three options, deed restricting an off-site unit, paying an in-lug fee. Or the developer could also propose to come up with another mechanism, like possibly building in a second unit and deed restricting that. There are a variety of options.
Okay. And then a follow-up question, if I may. The Alpine Meadows general plan, when was that adopted?
Well, that's a test.
Before you were here.
67 or 68, yes.
Right, right, before you were born. And what, do you know approximately the build-out? How much more development is there contained within that general plan?
Very little. Of properties that actually include general plan land use designations and zoning that facilitate additional development, one of the speakers mentioned the Alpine Knolls project that ultimately was approved but did not get carried out. That has a holding capacity of around 50 units. The gentleman mentioned it was approved at 27. I think he's right. It was in the mid-20s. And that's a typical yield for a project in this area. This being another one of the properties. And then the other, the remaining properties, I actually did a capacity analysis for a different project, which found that the other properties that have zoning are under the ownership of either the Forest Service or the Alpine Springs County Water District. And then there is one privately-owned property, 21 acres, that has a theoretical capacity of about 64 units.
Okay, thank you.
And that's not including the White Wolf project, but that project is proposing a rezon and general plan amendment to achieve its density.
And do you know approximately how many homes are within Alpine Meadows now, for context of these?
We had census data in the EIR, and off the top of my head, it's 500, less than 600, I believe it's, you know, 596, I think stands out.
Okay. Thank you.
And just for clarification, I think you mentioned during your staff report that the current zoning on this would allow somewhere in the neighborhood of 100 residence units?
Correct.
Okay. And we're being asked to consider 33?
38.
38, sorry. And a comment was made regarding fit within the neighborhood. Can you discuss lot sizes being proposed here versus lot sizes in the adjacent subdivisions?
Sure. So to the northwest, and you know, this graphic, I apologize, does not actually, if I could get the pointer to work, to the northwest here, this is Bear Creek Association, and that's a neighbor along the entire common boundary. Alpine Estates is further to the north here. Bear Creek includes lot sizes that are generally conforming to those in the western development pod. Those range between about .22 and .4 acres in size with an average of .29, .3. So quarter acre lots, effectively, quarter acre to third acre lots. In the eastern development pod, the lots range from about four tenths of an acre up to just under one acre. And again, the average is two-thirds of an acre in size. Those are somewhat larger than the lots on the adjoining neighboring Bear Creek Association. There are some other adjoining neighbors down here that have lots that are in the 1 to 2 acre size, including the Stanford Chalet, which you all actually approved the project for a couple of years ago, adjoining here. And then we have the Alpine Chalet condominium project over here. That's a multifamily project that's been there for some time. Alpine Estates Association, further to the north here, again, those are quarter acre to third acre lots.
Okay, so it sounds like what's being proposed is at a minimum compatible on the small side and maybe even might average larger than what's currently in the built environment.
That's a fair statement.
Okay. Comment was made about impact to the road during wildfire. I think we heard plenty of testimony about the shelter-in-place design of this. So I think that's been addressed. Supervisor Guffsterson, anything else you want to add?
I think that the only other comment I heard was concern over my short duration here, and so I wanted to cover a couple issues for the public. I did receive a full briefing on this project by Placer County staff. I spoke at length with Supervisor Montgomery as well. The planning commissioners involved with the support for this project, members of the NITRAC who also participated in a thorough process on this, reviewed the public record on this, received a number of public comments and emails, private emails, both in opposition and in support for the project. So I do believe, given the leadership that has already considered this project and the testimony we've heard today, that I'm adequately prepared to take action on this.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Having conducted the public hearing and answered any questions that my colleagues might have, and having had staff address any points raised under public comment, at this point, we are being asked to take a series of actions. First action is to adopt a resolution certifying the Alpine Sierra subdivision final environmental impact report and the errata scheduled 2014042028, prepared precedent of the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt findings of fact, and a mitigation monitoring reporting program. What's the pleasure of the board on that item?
Motion approval.
We have a second, a motion by Wiegand. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Guffsterson. I apologize, Supervisor Holmes, I didn't see your light on. Was there a comment you wish to make at this time?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment particularly about the fire safety access and the tremendous work that the North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District did. This is a template for any future development, not only in this region, but particularly down in western slope and some of the forested areas. And so I just, I think you've gone over and above providing service. I'd like to see an access road, but knowing that you tried everything you could to get that done, I appreciate that. And it's just a great example of cooperation through the fire service and the developer to do the best job they could to protect their residents. Thank you.
Okay. We do have a motion by Wiegand and a second by Guffsterson. Are there any other comments by board members under the question? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, abstentions, none. Thank you. We're also being asked to adopt a resolution to amend the Alpine Meadows general plan land use diagram.
Move approval, second.
Motion, Wiegand, second, Holmes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, abstentions, none. We're being asked to adopt an ordinance to rezon the Alpine Sierra subdivision project site.
Move approval. Second.
A motion, Wiegand, second, Holmes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, abstentions, none. We're being asked to approve the Alpine Sierra subdivision vesting tentative subdivision map.
Move approval, second.
Motion, Wiegand, second, Holmes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, abstentions.
That's subject to conditions of approval?
I'm sorry?
Did we include conditions of approval on that motion?
Well, I didn't because it wasn't written down in my agenda right here, so no, I didn't.
We should include, subject to findings and conditions of approval.
Okay. Does the maker of the motion accept the modification?
Yes.
Does the second concur?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, abstentions, none. And finally, approve the conditional use permit for the Alpine Sierra subdivision planned of residential development. Any modifications needed to that?
Move approval.
Same conditions as well?
Yes.
Okay. Motion, Wiegand, second, Holmes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, abstentions, none. Thank you very much. We will go ahead and move on to our 1020 timed item. I'm going to ask council, before we take up this item, gentleman spoke in public comment raising the question about our board taking action on this item up here in Tahoe. We also have an item that our board heard down in Auburn yesterday regarding the Granite Bay Community Plan area that our board is being asked to take final action on up here. So I'm going to have council once again explain why it is that we find ourselves in this position where we need to take tentative action on these at prior board meetings, only to show up here today to take final action on these items.
Under the government code, the county is only allowed to amend its general plan four times in a calendar year. Now, the government code allows multiple revisions to the general plan, but does limit the board to the calendar times. In order not to essentially use what would have been three of our four general plan rounds for the three projects the board has considered, the government code allows, and the county is elected to, what I like to refer to as bundling, the projects and bringing them on one date to constitute our first general plan round. Now, to the issue of the public hearing. Prior to amending the general plan, the government code requires that the legislative body, that being the board, conduct a public hearing. But the government code also states that the agenda need not provide for the opportunity of the members of the public to have another public hearing if such an item is continued, provided there are no substantive changes to that particular item. Therefore, what has happened with both Placer County Government Center project and the White Hawk, public hearings were held for the Government Center on the 9th of April and for White Hawk yesterday on the 22nd. Tentative action was taken and it was continued to today, again, for the formal adoption of the general plan amendments and the accompanying entitlements. The board, obviously, the chair may at any point elect to reopen a public hearing. However, as noted in the agenda, the public hearing was closed on those two dates, and it is brought forward at this point simply for this final action. I'm happy to answer any other questions if you need further clarifications on the process.
Any, sorry, any board members have any additional questions? All right, seeing none.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, Supervisor Holmes?
I just wanted to make a comment. Sadly, I wasn't able to make the April 9th meeting. It would have been really difficult for me to be here, be at the board meeting because I was attached to an IV, and it would have been awkward for me to try to make it here because I was in the hospital. I did watch the complete hearing on video and all the public comment, and I just want to let you know, and I, you know, I've lived next to DeWitt property all my life. I know it pretty well. So anyhow, I even know where some of the secret places are. So anyhow, I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Gore, did you have a comment?
So I stepped out for a moment.
Yes.
And we're talking about the master plan, correct?
We are moving on to the, yes, on to the...
So I would like to make a proposal, and that is, I mentioned at the meeting, there was interest in having an opportunity for people to save the theater. I had an opportunity to go look at the theater and tour it. It needs a lot of work. It is not something that I think the county needs to spend, quite frankly, half a million dollars on to improve. But that being said, I know there are a lot of members in our community that want to try to save it. So I would like to make a proposal, which would be to allow...
I'm going to ask you to hold just one moment, only because I haven't actually called the item.
Oh, you haven't? Okay, see you walk out of the room.
Yeah, no, I asked council to offer an explanation as to why we're taking these items from Granite Bay and Auburn up here in Tahoe.
Okay.
And she gave us the explanation on our limitation on general plan hearings. So I've actually not even called the item yet. But prior to calling the item, I do want to recognize Supervisor Guffsterson.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Euler. On this item, while I did attend the April 9th public hearing, I was not seated at the table to listen and ask questions in that capacity, and I have not had time to come up to speed on this like I did on the Alpine Sierra. So I'm going to choose to abstain on this.
Okay. Thank you very much. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and call the 1020 timed item. This is a CEDRA item, Placer County Government Center Master Plan. Do we have any additional staff input prior to us taking final action on this?
No, no input. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I would just, if I, I'm not sure if I could advance this, but I do have, on the presentation, I have, let's see here, it's just for your consideration, the final recommended action. So I can put that up here on the screen for you. Or not.
Or not.
It's all contained in your staff report package.
Sure.
But yes, we do just request that your board adopt, I'll just, I'm not going to read all of these, but just simply adopt a resolution certifying the Placer County Government Center Master Plan update final environmental impact report, which contains a mitigation monitoring reporting program and incorporates by reference the findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations for the project, adopt a resolution amending the Placer County general plan, adopt a resolution amending, and I can actually move to that real quick here for you. I do have some additional slides here, just in case your board has any questions, we could reference them. So let me just get to the end. Oops, there we go. Adopt a resolution amending the Auburn Bowman Community Plan, adopt a resolution approving the Placer County Government Center Master Plan update, another resolution approving the design guidelines for the Placer County Government Center Master Plan update, adopt an ordinance rezoning portions of the Placer County Government Center Master Plan campus, adopt an ordinance amending text within Placer County Code Section 1752135 that refers to town centers, and adopt an ordinance to approve the Placer County Government Center Master Plan development standards that are contained in the master plan document. And that is it.
Okay. Supervisor Gore?
All right. Let's reset. Thank you. That's what happens when you walk out of the room. Okay, so the DeWitt Theater. There's interest in the community. There are members who've shown interest in saving the theater, and I heard that interest. I had an opportunity to tour that site, and boy, it needs a lot of work. It really is not acceptable for anyone to use it right now. And as I walked with our facilities director, it was evident that probably close to a half a million dollars would need to be spent to get that theater to a working, to a working building that would be accessible. But I do want our community to have the opportunity to save that theater if there's an interest in doing so. So this would be my recommendation, and that would be to allow a group of residents to work with a nonprofit to raise money, to work to save that site. But what I don't want to have happen is for a process like this to move on and on and on, especially because we've got a master developer or a proposal for a master developer to develop the campus. And where that theater sits, it's in a mixed-use area, so the theater could be included there. But I don't want to have work being done where you actually have to stop work around it for 10 years because we're trying to get a theater, raise money for a theater to be restored. So my proposal would be to allow a group of people for up to two years for that effort to take, to move forward. So people would have up to two years to raise the money to help restore that site. Spoke with county council, and I know that I can't necessarily mandate, hey, they need to raise $200,000 by, in the next two years. to raise $200,000 by, in the next two years to save that building. That being said, there has to be a significant amount of money raised by the community in order to save this, because otherwise, if it's $50,000 here and $25,000 there, we're easily looking at a half a million dollar project to restore that site. We just can't have this go on and on. So I do recommend not demolishing that portion for two years, and then it can come back to the board for approval at that time. So you can give me some inputs, thoughts on that recommendation.
Start to my left with Supervisor Holmes.
Yeah, thank you. I have no objection to that. A couple of the proponents for saving that theater had come to me and wanted to see if we could change the language where it says that the buildings will be, will be demolished, to see if we could change that to where they could be demolished or may be demolished in sometime soon, just to kind of give the opportunity for the people that are trying to preserve that theater to ensure any, anybody that wanted to donate or maybe try to rebuild that facility, with some certainty that they're not going to be, they will be demolished. They may be demolished over a period of time. So that's, that was my, maybe my comments as well.
Okay, and just for clarification, I believe that the, the reference to the buildings being demolished was to anticipate the most drastic, if you will, action possible for our environmental review. Certainly, anything short of that, having been covered by our environmental document, anticipating the demolition, anything short of that, which, which doesn't meet that maximum threshold for the environmental review, doesn't require additional action by our board or anything else, but I don't believe that the language in there where it references that these buildings shall be demolished is a directive to fire up the D8s and go out there and take them down. I believe it's more simply to cover ourselves legally in the event that those buildings are actually taken down. And so I don't know that changing the language in our environmental documents is necessarily the best course of action for us. I'd defer to counsel. I think that certainly capturing the intent of the board as expressed by yourself and Supervisor Gore, in terms of just allowing a little bit of time to see if folks can get something together, I think that accomplishes the same kind of thing, but I would defer to counsel on that language change.
Well, I, I agree with you. Several of the proponents of saving the historic buildings have suggested changes to the environmental impact report. I can't support that from a legal basis. First of all, as Chair Euler has pointed out, this is a programmatic EIR except for the project level on the two project components. It is, under CECL, required to look at the worst-case scenario and analyze that. It's a 20-year plan. That's exactly what has been done. It does not mean that tomorrow, all the buildings will be torn down. Now, can they be torn down? Yes, they can, but they have to go through the process of demolition permit, have the funding, the budget to do so. So I don't recommend, another reason I don't recommend you change the environmental impact report is it would require recirculation. There's nothing in the record that I have seen that would indicate that recirculation is necessitated. It's my opinion, this is an adequate EIR, and therefore I cannot support the changes to the EIR. That being said, if the board would like to consider adding a provision to allow the theater to stay for a certain period of time, what I'd recommend you do is look at the development standards. The reason being is those standards will serve as the zoning code for the government center. And we could, for example, propose a provision that states that the, any, for example, any project that proposes to demolish the theater must go forward for a subsequent public hearing. I do recommend, if you put that in, to add a sunset clause, that's going, you know, responding to Supervisor Gore's comment about, let's not let this go on and on and on. It's possible to do a sunset clause where you wouldn't have to come back and amend your development standards. It simply would go away if nothing happened by a certain, date certain. So that's what I would propose. There is somewhat of a dilemma here that if we are going to go down that road, whether we are under the government code going to be required to open public comment on that provision. A couple of thoughts here. I don't consider this to be a substantial change to the entire project because this has been discussed, it has been analyzed. That would be my position. Obviously, the chair can open up the public comment. You could alternatively consider continuing just the development standard portion of this package to another date if you wish to have more discussion about it. That would not impact the general plan round. My recommendation in that case would be that you take action on everything else and continue the development standard. So just to summarize, I think you have a few options here. One is to do nothing and go forward as is. Two would be to consider a change in the development standards, and I believe it with the chair as to whether he wishes to reopen the public comment period for that portion. If you wish to have more substantive discussion about that, the development standards, then we would move with everything else and continue that to a date, time and date certain. So that's what I see as your options, if you wish to go that.
All right, thank you. Supervisor what? Supervisor Wagan.
So first, supported, yeah, thanks, Bonnie's comments and, and goal and Jim's position also. Appreciate Kirk, you raising your concerns, and Karen's response. I like most the sound of maybe bringing back the development standards, and I think we could do it quickly. I think my position would be that, sort of as Bonnie articulated, that we provide an opportunity to let folks in the community bring forward some suggestions to us as it relates to the theater and maybe some other components that have been discussed. But we would, I, not so fixated on a particular timeframe, like two years, but, you know, something like up to a particular period of time. But let's say, for example, that we're, I wouldn't want to impose any restrictions on a really quality proposal in concert with what I think are the primary goals of the master plan, which is to develop the DeWitt standard, the DeWitt Center in the vision that was developed so well with the master plan itself. So if something within a couple of years came forward that would require a demolition of the theater, and there had been no success by people in the community to help preserve it, I wouldn't want to hold up that. So I think we could come up with some language in a development standard, actually pretty quickly, maybe at our next meeting even, to, to just review that and see if it fits our needs. And without it being so fixated on some kind of airtight standard, and I certainly would not support. It's my understanding that staff did a great job, I think, of bringing forward an EIR in all language that gives the board exactly a maximum flexibility to consider these kinds of things, which is trying to figure out what the package looks like that we finish that up in. And, and, you know, if there is interest in the community to do some of this good work, I'd be very supportive of that, but not to the extent that it stops the master plan in and of itself.
Having heard a little bit of this discussion, having seen the various comments that have come in, I did a little bit of drafting, but it's very hard to visualize this either for the public or the board members. So I'm going to do my best to describe what might be a potential for you to consider. And that is, in the development standards, the development standards are separated into the various zones. The theater happens to be in the mixed-use zone, so there are mixed-use standards, and there is, and I'm referring to page 30 of the development standards. There is a section that includes land use restrictions. One potential would be to add a provision that reads something such as this. Projects within the mixed-use designation that identify the removal of the theater shall be subject to a public hearing. Now, this could be before the planning commissioner or the board, whichever is chosen. This provision shall sunset, and I just picked a date, on July 1st, 2021. That sunset means that this provision would never have, would simply go away on its own. Again, this is simply a suggestion to kind of move along the discussion if the boards so chooses.
Okay. So, given that we are having fairly extensive conversation about possible modification to the development standards, and that I know there's at least one individual who took the time to drive up from Auburn to address this particular issue, I'm going to go ahead and reopen the opportunity for public comment. I would ask you to keep your comments limited to the item that the board is discussing, and that is possible modification to the development standards to possibly adopt language specific to the theater. So if at this time you're so inclined to address the board, this is your opportunity to do so. You're not inclined to address the board? I'm giving you the chance to step up here and talk to us.
I was understanding that this was about the theater.
That's, it's precisely.
I'm not here to talk about the theater.
Oh, okay.
But I am here to talk about the master plan.
Okay, go ahead and take this opportunity, since I did, went ahead and opened the public comment, and you drove up, go ahead and take this opportunity to do so.
Steve Pettit, I'm a resident in North Auburn. I live four miles from the DeWitt Center. And I've been studying the, the 20-year development plan that I, that I see and all the documents that I see. And I've watched the progression of how the firm, Williams and Penn, have put together a really outstanding plan, really pretty pictures and smiling people walking in parks and stuff like that. But there's a, there's a glaring can here that's been kicked down the road a long time, and it's the homeless shelter. The homeless shelter is close, it'd be four years old now. And looking at the homeless shelter, I don't see it in the plan. There's a promise of a permanent shelter for homeless in Placer County. It has not materialized. And there's no plan to do it on the DeWitt Center. So it just seems odd to me that we would embark on this massive development plan for the DeWitt Center without any thought, apparently, to the homeless shelter that's on that property. In fact, some of the plans actually show a road going through the current shelter. So the latest one doesn't do that. The shelter is still in the place that it's in, but it's labeled warehouse. So I guess we're going to still warehouse people in that shelter. So the shelter is, like I said, close to four years old. Inside, there's no visible improvements. There's still dormitory-style beds. There's still no sink in the cafeteria area. Local groups, church groups bring food in. They have to bring dirty dishes out because they can't clean the dishes. It's showing serious use of three and a half years. So outside, there has been improvement. They put lights up on the street behind the shelter. So the congregation of people who are not in the shelter doesn't occur on that street, and that's good stuff. Changed the name of it to the Mid Placer Emergency Shelter back in July of 2018. And I assume that's a good thing as well. In May of 2017, you extended the permit five years. I think that's good, too. But I thought that five years was so you could develop a plan for a permanent shelter. We have more than 600 of our citizens in Placer County who are in the situation of being homeless, and they deserve our help. I see a subdivision in Alpine Vista that's very substantial. That does serve these people, as was pointed out. So I would ask that you go back to this plan and consider how we're going to mitigate the homeless problem that's in this county. This plan does not have it, and it's sad to me that that wasn't addressed in the plan in some way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just for clarification on that point, the current location where the shelter is currently operated, as well as some of the existing buildings, general references warehoused, is not actually a part of the updated territory, right? We carved out that part and said essentially that's going to stay as is. And, and so the master plan actually carved out that area where the shelter is, correct?
That's correct. If we could just, Crystal, if we could flip back to the.
I'm sorry, I need your name for the record, please.
Paul Breckenridge, Facilities Management Capital Improvements.
Thank you.
Yeah, the area where the shelter is currently is down in this location, and we have every intention, and we have allowed in the master plan for that to continue either at that location or somewhere else on the campus. So currently, we have not looked at relocating it, but we have incorporated into both the, into the standards, the ability from a land use zoning perspective to handle that designation as emergency shelter in that zone area, which I believe is the.
C3.
The C3 zone. So anywhere within the C3 zone, we are able to either continue on or develop a new location for a shelter.
Thank you very much. Okay, going to close the briefly reopened public comment.
Mr. Chair.
And bring it back to, I'm sorry, oh, sorry, Supervisor Holmes, I didn't see you.
I just wanted to address the issue about the food and the food service. There is no commercial kitchen in the shelter. However, there is a food trailer, a $75,000 food trailer that has a commercial kitchen component in it, and it's housed out at the airport right now as we're preparing to connect it to the homeless shelter, behind the homeless shelter, where the food will be prepared in the commercial kitchen onsite. It'll also give the homeless individuals the opportunity to have food service training. Health and Human Services or Environmental Health has a food service training program to help those individuals learn about food service training and safety, and then be eligible for employment in the restaurant industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes. All right, well, prior to reading off the list of actions we need to take, I just wanted to offer kind of my two cents worth on the idea of taking additional time on the theater. I'm trying to remember the exact year. I want to say it was somewhere around 2012 when the county entered into an exclusive right to negotiate with Jim Conkey on the Costco, Possible Costco Project. And that project would have resulted in the demolition of the theater and a number of other buildings in order to accommodate the Costco location. That was the first time that we heard a very loud public outcry about trying to save the theater, and that was seven years ago. We, back then, it was identified what the challenges of that theater were from a health and safety standpoint, access standpoint, all the rest. Subsequent to that, of course, the Costco proposal went away. Again, doing this off the top of my head, I want to say that was 2016-ish, the Costco project kind of evaporated on us and now is being discussed down in Loomis. So three years ago, the project went away. There has been ample opportunity, I believe, for the community, this, none of what is being discussed here today was discussed in secret. Everything has been out there in public, including the possibility of mixed use at the location where the theater currently exists. There has been ample opportunity for the public who's interested in the preservation of that theater to take up the cause over the last seven years, I believe, in order to show up today with a viable alternative that would otherwise preserve it. Nothing in what is being requested by staff today presupposes that the theater is going to go away tomorrow, as I pointed out in our previous hearing. Given that we control the property up there, nothing's going to happen up there until we figure out how it's going to get paid for, who's going to do it, all that other good stuff. And so I just don't see. And so I just don't see, personally, I don't see the need to modify the development standards or take any additional action in regard to that, the theater, because I believe if the, if the interest in preserving the theater were more than just passions, we would have seen some progress in the last seven years toward a coalescence of that community and the raising of the money to make the changes necessary in the facility for it to be a viable theater going forward. Those are just my thoughts. Supervisor Gore?
Fair enough, I don't disagree. That being said, I think that in light of a master plan development for this campus, that theater will go away. And it's very clear now with actions that we're taking that there'll be an area that's demolished for reuse, which is terrific and I think very important. And I feel like this is the opportunity where we're moving forward, there's a sort of a last chance for folks to say this is really of value, then they have the opportunity to do something about that. So I feel like this is giving them that opportunity. We can decide on whether or not it's two years or not, but like I said, I don't want it to be a long period of time. And if there is that interest, they can demonstrate it, and if not, we move forward.
Okay. So what I'm going to suggest, given that we have a series of actions to take, and the final action references the development standards, if it's the pleasure of the board at that time to include the additional language that council has prepared, then the maker of the motion can do so. But meanwhile, there's nothing that prevents us from taking each of the actions listed until we get down to item H. So with that, unless there are other comments by my colleagues, I'm going to go ahead and request, if there is, a motion to adopt the resolution certifying the PCGC Master Plan Update Final Environmental Impact Report, Schedule 2017092020, prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, and adopt the mitigation monitoring reporting program supported by, and incorporating by reference in its entirety the findings of fact and statements of overriding considerations. Do we have a motion for that action?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Holmes, second Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, abstain?
Abstain.
Thank you. Item B is a request to adopt a resolution amending the Placer County General Plan to reference and recognize the PCGC Master Plan Update, including edits to General Plan Tables 1-1, 1-2, and Figures 1-1 and 1-2.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Holmes, second Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, abstentions?
Abstain.
One. Adopt a resolution amending the Auburn Bowman Community Plan to replace and supersede all references to the Dewitt Center with the Placer County Government Center Master Plan Update and to redesignate lands for the PCGC campus?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Holmes, second Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, abstentions?
Abstain.
Adopt a resolution approving the PCGC Master Plan Update?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Holmes, second Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, abstentions?
Abstain.
One. Resolution approving the PCGC Master Plan Update Design Guidelines, is this?
No.
No, it's development standards, thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Holmes, second Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, abstentions?
Abstain.
One. Adopt an ordinance resounding portions of the PCGC campus?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Holmes, second Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, abstentions?
Abstain.
One. Adopt an ordinance amending text within Placer County Code, Section seventeen-five-two-one-three-five, Town Center Commercial to allow modified development standards for development in areas that include the Town Center zoning overlay, subject to approval of an area plan, master plan, or specific plan?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Holmes, second Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, abstentions?
Abstain.
And finally, the requested action is to adopt an ordinance approving the PCGC Master Plan Updated Development Standards. Is there a modification to that motion?
Yes, so either we can modify it now and make that decision now, or we can postpone it till our next meeting. But I'm fine with actually County Council's recommendation to make the change that says projects within the mixed use designation to identify the removal of the theater shall be subject to a public hearing. I would suggest before the Board of Supervisors, and this provision shall sunset July 1st, 2021.
You can certainly, if, if, if there is a majority vote to do this, you can certainly take action now. I would request in that case that you add to this, adopt an ordinance approving the PCGC Master Plan Update Development Standards as modified.
Okay, well, is there agreement to do what I recommended now?
My, my preference would be to go ahead and take action now.
Yeah, I would prefer that as well.
Okay. So that's my motion to amend it.
Do we need the motion restated for the record, or was it adequately captured? Adequately captured, okay. We, yes, okay, thank you. We have a motion, Gore, second, Holmes, on the motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's three in the affirmative, one no, abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay. I believe that concludes all the action regarding the Placer County Government Center Master Plan. So we will go ahead and now move on to our 10:25 timed item. This is also a cedra item regarding White Hawk II subdivision, which was continued from yesterday, public hearing having been closed.
Christopher Schmidt with the Planning Services Division. Yesterday, your board took tentative action to approve the White Hawk II subdivision, a fifty-five lot planned residential development in Granite Bay. We're here today asking you to take final action on that project. Project site is on the south side of Douglas at Sino Avenue. We're asking for a rezone, northern portion to open space, and the southern portion to RAB twenty PD of one point seven-five units per acre. There were a couple of changes to the conditions. Condition seventy-one F was modified to allow for twenty-five-foot sewer easement in lieu of the thirty-foot shown on the tentative map, and also changes to condition one-twenty, dealing with affordable housing. And with that, staff recommends you take final action to approve the project, adoption of a resolution to certify the EIR, adoption of a resolution to amend the community plan land use designation for the project site, adoption of an ordinance to rezone the project site, approval of a vesting tentative subdivision map, approval of a conditional use permit for the planned residential development with those modified conditions, and approval of a variance for block coverage, allowing fifty percent coverage for single-story residences where thirty to forty percent is normally allowed. Items two, three, and six are subject to the findings contained in the staff report.
Subject to the findings as modified in regard to condition seventy-one F and condition one-twenty?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, prior to taking any action here, Supervisor Gustafson?
Again, as I did yesterday, I'm going to abstain from participation in this effort. I have not been fully briefed or prepared on this item.
Thank you. Any other supervisors have any questions or comments prior to us taking final action? Seeing none, we are currently being asked under this item to adopt a resolution to certify White Hawk I and II Project Final Environmental Impact Report, Schedule 2016082009 and 2016082010, and errata prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, adopt findings of fact and statements of overriding consideration, and the mitigation monitoring reporting program. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Gore, second, Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, abstentions?
Abstain.
One. Adopt a resolution to amend the Granite Bay Community Plan Land Use Designation, White Hawk II Project Site from Rural Residential two-point-three to four-point-six minimum acre parcel size, and Rural Low Density Residential point-nine to two-point-three acre minimum parcel size, to Low Density Residential point-four, two-point-nine acres per dwelling unit, and open space. Pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Gore, second, Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, abstentions?
Abstain.
One. Adopt an ordinance to rezone White Hawk II Project Site from RAB one-hundred residential agricultural combined minimum building site of one-hundred thousand square feet, to RAB twenty PD one-point-seven-five residential agricultural combined minimum building site of twenty thousand square feet, combining planned residential development of one-point-seven-five units per acre, and to open space.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Gore, second, Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, abstentions?
Abstain.
One. Approve a vesting tenure map subdivision map for the subdivision of thirty-two-point-nine-seven acres into a fifty-five lot planned residential development with nine open space and common area lots.
Subject to the conditions of the-
Thank you, subject to conditions of approval as amended specifically to condition seventy-one F and one-twenty.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, Gore, second, Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, abstentions?
Abstain.
One. Approve a conditional use permit to construct a planned residential development.
Move approval.
Subject to conditions.
Subject to conditions as modified to seventy-one F and one-twenty. We sell a motion Supervisor Gore?
Okay, so move.
Okay, thank you. And second by Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, abstentions?
Abstain.
All right, and finally, I believe finally, before I, okay. Approve a variance to lot coverage, allowing up to fifty percent coverage for single-story residences where thirty to forty percent is normally allowed.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Gore, second, Wiegand, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, abstentions?
Abstain.
One.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so we're going to go ahead and jump forward to our 10:40 timed item. We will get to our 10:30 timed item, but we've been asked if we could take our 10:40 timed item. This is a annual update North Lake Tahoe Resort Association fiscal year eighteen-nineteen Tourism Development, and Ms. Casey is here to-
I am.
Present.
Good morning. Erin Casey with the County Executive Office. I'm very pleased to introduce our speakers today, board members from the Resort Association, but I first would like to congratulate Supervisor Gustafson for her appointment. It's been really a pleasure for me to work with you and your amazing staff over the last two years with the organization. I'm very happy that I will continue to be able to work with you in this capacity. So also wanted to mention that a lot of the information board members are going to cover with you is a result of a lot of the hard work from Cindy and her team, as well as board members and community members over the last two years. They've also really been focusing on identifying additional funding strategies, which we've talked about with your board in the past. They're going to elaborate on a tourist business improvement district that they're focused on right now and have engaged Civitas, a consultant that is helping them put that together, to try to identify additional sources to fund the tourism master plan, because as we've talked with you at length, we have significant gaps in funding on that. I also want to mention that this, the work of the Resort Association is really tied very closely to several of the critical success factors that your board has identified as part of your strategic plan, including economic development, working in partnership with community organizations, and as well as funding public infrastructure. So with that, I'd like to hand the presentation over to Samir Tuma, I think, oh, Adam Wilson, sorry, Adam Wilson, current Chair of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you. My name is Adam Wilson, and I am the current Chair of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. So thank you for allowing us some time, and thank you for switching two items. I did not manage my time, I guess, well enough to expect some delay in getting to the timed item, so thank you. What I'd like to first jump into, oh, let's see here, do we have the presentation? What I'd like to talk about first of all is just a little bit of an update as to what we've been up to, some of the work, as Erin pointed out, that we've been working on for over two and a half years, and some of the changes to the organization, kind of a reimagination of the organization as we continue to drive the results of the 2015 Tourism Master Plan. One of those items that came to us was a change in the makeup of our board. And in doing so, we were asked as input from the community support to kind of expand what the board looked like, both geographically as well as the businesses that were represented on that board. What you see ahead of you here is the new board that has been working this year, a bunch of volunteers in a variety of businesses, as well as geographical areas in the eastern Placer County. So we're very excited about that change. We've also been very pleased with the engagement of this board and what we're trying to do and accomplish in support of the 2015 Tourism Master Plan. That rolls right into our committee work, same kind of feedback we got from the work that we were doing, and that was, again, to look at those committees, make sure that we had the right people on those committees, we had that diversification available, and as you can see, we have over thirty businesses represented in these three committees, and this does not include the co-chair of the CAP Committee. These are the Finance Tourism Development and Business Association and Chamber Collaborative. So again, feel very positive that the feedback that we got, that we've been able to implement, and this is just a testament to those efforts. So let's, just for a quick background, the history of the TOT. So as you know, it's been fifty-five years since we've been collecting TOT in this region. You've reinvested, the county and these boards have reinvested into this community. In nineteen ninety-five, the Resort Association was created to manage on behalf of, at your service, those funds for a number of areas serving tourism development and the Tourism Master Plan. In nineteen ninety-six, we have a two percent increase, again, directly influencing transit and infrastructure, community-serving infrastructure, as well as tourism infrastructure. We appreciate that commitment to this, this community and to this Resort Association to manage that. This, this past year, as you can see here, we had a contract with you specifically around tourism development. That was for a little over three-point-eight million, of which just under three million was directly related to marketing services. Then we had conference and group sales, just a little over three-hundred-and-fifty, visitor information services of a little over four-fifty, and then some work to include the analysis of additional funding mechanisms that would be possible to identify the shortfall that was part of the Tourism Master Plan 2015. Why? Well, because we have a lot of opportunity up here. We still see a huge influence of our visitors showing up on the weekends throughout this area because of our geographical area and the drive consumer. What we've been really focused on is how do we spread that out? How do we really focus on those efforts specifically in the tourism development to make this so it's less like an EKG and more like a flatline? Well, not flatline in a bad way, though, flatline in a good way. What you can see here is that black line in the middle there is at fifty percent occupancy. You see the majority of the time in this snapshot of time is below that fifty percent. So this is really what continues to drive our efforts, because we see a lot of opportunity here where we can, in fact, continue to drive more TOT, which stabilizes the economy and continues with our economic development here in the eastern Placer County region. As part of that, we have a couple priorities. First of all, as I mentioned before, that is increasing the destination visitor. This helps us with our midweek. We know that the destination visitor's length of stay is substantially longer than our weekend visitors, and we also have the opportunity to drive non-peak and shoulder season visitation, and we have strategies around that. So that was one of our priorities. Second priorities is the emphasis on focusing on the markets where we have air service, and air service into Reno specifically. As you can see, here's a couple examples. We did have Austin recently. These things fluctuate, obviously, the airlines don't always stay true to what we hope they will. Even with strong load factors, there are different priorities, and we have, we're part of a committee in Reno in the Tahoe area that continues to drive this direct flight information, but currently, we do focus on those markets where we do have direct flights. And last, of course, shoulder seasons, as I mentioned before, we do look at how we look at the shoulder season strategy, and we focus that more on our local, regional, and drive markets, because we know that they can react a little bit quicker to those kinds of activities. How do we bring these priorities to life? Through these strategies. So we've got public relations, social media, obviously, we're developing incredible content. The staff is really focused on making sure that we share the beauty of this area, and we can do that through unique content and opportunities there. Digital media, special events, again, specifically driving the shoulder season time periods, international and domestic leisure sales, and in groups and conferences. leisure sales and in groups and conferences, so the team here in Tahoe at the Resort Association along with the CEO's office work really hard to make sure they identify the opportunities that we have, and then this is the strategies that we go to support those priorities as we move forward in that area. A couple of things that we've changed, and we have kind of got some temporary results and forth, is really looking at our KPIs, the key performance indicators, and making sure that they're aligned with the priorities and the strategies as we continue to reimagine the organization and making sure that we drive that business. So one of the things that we did this last year is we hired a company called SMAR, Strategic Marketing and Research Insights, they have allowed us to look at the results of the strategies in a more real-time manner, that allows us to make adjustments as we're going through the season to make sure that we're, that the content that we're delivering, the advertising that we're doing, the paid media that we're placing is actually driving the results that we want, and we are very pleased with the results, currently at $182 to one investment, which is incredible, 153.8 million visitor spending and over 80,000 influenced trips by those spends and that media, so this has really provided us with a great tool and has allowed us to realign our key performance indicators to make sure that we are driving the results that you're entrusting in us as we move through that. This is a graph that just gives you a little idea of the growth of TOT, we're on the record, on another record year in eastern Placer County, and we continue to obviously substantially outperform the CPI, we look forward to that continued growth as we continue to look at how we implement specifically the tourism development piece. So I talked a little bit earlier about the peak seasons versus the shoulder seasons and the off-peak seasons, and this is a great graph that kind of shows that we're seeing the kind of results that we have, we've tasked with, and that is to really push Q2 and Q4 resorts, and for just a reference, our fiscal year is July 1 through June 30, and so Q2 is fall and Q4 is spring, as you can see here, Q2, we've seen an increase in TOT collections of 138% and in Q4, 183%, again, this is based on the team and the cooperation with the partners that we have here in Tahoe, driving this tourism piece. This gives you just a little feel of the budgets that have been placed in this area of marketing from our, some of our comp set, and I think what's important to point out here is that most of these other competitor destinations have more than one source of funding, and we identified in a 2015 master plan, if you recall, a huge shortfall in funding, and so we're going to address that as part of this presentation, but I just wanted you to see the difference in our spending to drive that tourism development. Here's a little snapshot of that shortfall that we talked about that was identified in 2015 master plan, and it was just under $100 million of shortfall in funding, we have worked closely with the county and the CEO's staff here to look at how we could bridge that gap, how can we shorten that shortfall, and so this year, we undertook a voter survey in collaboration with the CEO's office at your, with your commitment, and we saw that 71% of the voters realize that we do need that additional funding in order to successfully move the 2015 master plan forward, there was obviously strong support for TOT and sales tax, but this board also believes that there's an opportunity to actually put in place a T-bid, and, and we're going to share a little bit of the information around that, and I'll hand it over to Samir for that.
Thank you.
Thanks Adam, Samir Tuma, Vice Chair of the Board, just point out that in addition to Adam and myself, we have two other board members, three of our senior staff, so it takes seven of us to replace what Cindy would have otherwise done, so, thanks so much for stealing her. So, a little bit about the T-bid, T-bids are well-established in California, many, many jurisdictions, over 100 of them have them, they're a common way and increasingly common way to, to fund the types of priorities and things that we're talking about, there's, there's clear legislation that allows for it, so it's, we're not doing anything different or outside the box, you guys have seen these in, in other parts of Placer County as well, and, and the idea here is that businesses get to, they essentially assess themselves for these amounts, and there's some, some constraints and some concerns regarding that, and I'll, I'll touch on those a little bit further as we go in, but the idea here is that the group of businesses who agree to assess themselves, and most of that is passed on ultimately to the, the guest or customer, but they also get control over how those dollars are spent, and that's laid out in the, in the plan that we will be undertaking. So, I, I want to preface this slide and really the rest of the discussion with, a lot of what you're going to see here today is preliminary, preliminary in the sense of, you know, we've had a lot of discussions with community members, but we certainly haven't had discussions with all the community members who are going to be impacted by this, we've, we've tried to, to discuss with a lot of the senior leadership at most of the major companies that would be involved here, but we've got a lot of work to do, and really today, as you'll see our timeline later, this is, this is just kicking off an effort, so there are some preliminary things here, there's some thoughts here, we even have some preliminary projections, but I just want not only you, but the members of the public and business community to know this is the start of a conversation, this is by no means what we're saying here is, is what we want, but we did want to develop a framework to begin the discussion with your, with your board as well as the rest of the community, and so the framework here is essentially what we're talking about, which would first give the Resort Association an additional level of independence in terms of representing the community and having an independent source for the funding to do that, the, one of the things that we have heard very loud and very clear from all of the constituents that we've talked about is, part of what we're proposing here is the $3.8 million, which Adam referred to, would go back to the county, but people are wanting to make sure that those funds are spent in areas of concern and need for, for the community, and those really have been identified primarily as transportation and housing, so that's, that's kind of part of the feedback that we've heard from the community is we really want those funds identified and, and to stay towards those priorities. The, one of the, the beauties of, of a T-bid is it begins to, to sort of share the, the burden, if you will, across a number of different industries, not just lodging, and so we're looking at a T-bid that, that in this community, and we'll show, I'll show some numbers, but there's, there's recreation activities, dining, retail, everybody really benefits from the tourists coming here in many, many ways, and so this is an opportunity, unlike TOT or even sales tax, this is an opportunity to spread that, that burden, but also the benefits across all the different organizations that, that benefit from that. One of the things that we would do also, there's been some confusion in the marketplace with people paying, well, they're paying their chamber fees and their business association fees, and they don't sort of always understand what they're getting for that, this would be an opportunity to bring all that together, and those fees would go away, but those organizations would be continued to, to be funded through the T-bid funds. And the, the, finally, one of the other components that we've been talking with county staff about in particular is a commitment to renew the current TOT, the 2% in 2020, eliminate, potentially eliminating the sunset, that 2% was passed quite some time ago and really has become sort of part of the, the budget and, and what we need, so there's been some talk about supporting that, that step as we move forward. A little bit about the numbers, you know, TOT, historically lodging, that's where people think these taxes are, but, but, you know, we have huge industries, in a total of about $650 million annually come in through these various industries, and, and again, this is a, the, the T-bid is an opportunity to make that burden a little bit more equitable and diversify away from lodging really carrying the, the, the only burden here. A little bit about sales tax, one of the concerns amongst the constituents is, well, you know, gee, is this going to make us uncompetitive in terms of overall assessments and taxes and that sort of thing, where's, you know, where's the room to grow? When we looked at sales tax comparison within our competitive set in the region, we're quite low, and we're not replacing, you know, we're not adding a sales tax here, but in terms of sort of, let's say, a retail outlet, their ability to absorb an increase here and remain competitive, the data shows us that that's, that's, that's quite, quite possible. Same thing with TOT, again, these are our, our major competitors, we're well under where others are, we're not, for the most part, we're not talking about catching all the way up to say Mammoth, which is at 14, Sonoma, which is at 14, Napa at 14, and others in the, in the state are higher, but we're talking about remaining competitive with a, a bit of an increase in order to fill some of the gap in, in the funding that we have. So this is diagram that I encourage you to spend a little time studying and understanding, really the two key components here are designated by the arrows, so this is just a way to think about how funds would flow and the sources of new funds, essentially the $3.8 million in that middle bubble at the top is the, is our current budget for the Resort Association, and the thinking is that, excuse me, that that money would come back to Placer County, again, with a very specific agreement that the, that it be used for workforce housing and transportation, and then the additional funds, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of five to six million, depending on some things we'll talk about later and how they come out, that money would go into promoting the destination and providing some additional services that the Resort Association is proposing to provide, and overall, increasing on an annual basis of about five to six million dollars, and over time, obviously, that begins to eat away at the $99 million deficit that we have on the spending, so it doesn't solve everything, but it's a, it's a good chunk of the way there. This is something that, I'll be quite frank, there was some hesitancy to share because it is very preliminary, and so I want everybody, again, I'm going to emphasize, this is very preliminary, is a talking point, this is a place to start, but the idea here, as you can see, is to, is to spread, spread the, where these monies come from, so lodging would, would continue to provide a significant portion of these funds, assessing food and beverage and retail, as you saw earlier, big numbers that are involved there, so this would, this would bring that group into the fold, and then activities, and the, there's a big asterisk there on activities, and part of the reason is that the, the activities, for the most part, are not currently taxed or, there's really no way for, for us as a, as a community or the county as an organization to really know what those numbers are, now we've, this isn't uneducated guesses, this is, you know, this is, a lot of work went into this sort of half a million dollar number, but we will find that out in the next phase of the work with the Civitas as to where that number actually comes in, but because there is no current taxing mechanism or assessment mechanism on those businesses, it's difficult for, for us to know exactly the, the amount of those. So, as I said, we're sort of here today kicking this off, we have a fairly defined timeline here which we think is, is focused, but it also allows adequate time for discussion with the community, discussion with all of our partners at the Resort Association, and continuing discussion with, with your board regarding the activities that, that need to happen in order to, to make this work, and so the idea here, like I said, is we're kicking off today, we're going to spend a good portion of the, the balance of the spring and, and half of the summer, reaching out, educating, talking with people, we do have to put together a plan that, as you'll know from your, your prior experience with T-bids, specifies sort of where this money is going to be spent in, in, in broad strokes, but enough definition so that, you know, we, we have, we have our direction as, as Resort Association as to how to spend these, these, these funds and where they'll go. We'll then undertake a petition drive in the latter half of the summer and into the fall, and the idea here hopefully is that by the end of the calendar year, which is mid-fiscal year for us, that we would have this mechanism in place. Now, the mechanism in place, of course, doesn't mean that immediately the money starts coming in, it takes some time, and we'll be working with, with your staff in order to, to, to fill that gap in time, but, by this time next year, hopefully, we'll be, we'll be in quite good shape, the county will have additional funds to focus on transportation and housing, and, and we'll be off to the races, and one of the other components here is that we, we have been talking with staff, and I mentioned this earlier, about potentially in the spring of next year, begin to look at the potential for making the 2% TOT, taking away the sunset clause and making it evergreen, so that's a, that's another activity that we'll be undertaking. So with that, that I think concludes our presentation, and we're certainly happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any board members have any questions or comments on the report? Supervisor Gore?
First of all, just thank you for the presentation, and I really appreciate the effort that you folks are doing to look at how we address a number of the issues up here in the basin, and I had the opportunity to sit on the Roseville City Council when we put together a P-bid for our downtown Roseville property owners, and it's been very successful, we worked with Civitas and they did an excellent job, and the fact that you folks are at the place where you're moving forward with this, I really appreciate, and I really appreciate the comment about trying to reduce the burdens of memberships like chamber memberships, business associations, because, right, more and more monies that people have to put out, it makes it challenging, so I think that's a very creative solution, and my hats go off to you for trying to find ways to get people to really buy in to a, a situation that will be successful for the businesses, the economy, tourism here in the area.
Good, thank you. Supervisor Holmes, your light is on, did you have something you wanted to?
Oh, no, I just want to thank you for the very robust presentation.
Supervisor Gustafson, did you get all that? Did you, did you understand? Any term, any terms we need to explain to you or anything, no? Pretty good with that. So completely, obviously completely anecdotal, but it has always been my practice when I'm on a chairlift to strike up conversations with folks and find out, you know, who they are, where they're from, all that good stuff, and particularly interesting to me this year, obviously, the majority of folks that you're going to run into are still going to be Bay Area, but what was really interesting to me this year was the number of folks that I met who were from Texas, Austin in particular, and then on a Friday afternoon at Squaw, I'm riding the Granite Chief Lift, which by the way, when are they going to update that one? It's just, riding the Granite Chief Lift with a fellow who is asking me some questions about the mountain, and I said, where are you from? He's a doctor from New York who had finished up his shift Thursday afternoon, red-eyed out to Reno, grabbed his stuff and was on the hill on Friday, he was going to ski Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then fly back to New York, because the airfares out to Reno just made all the sense in the world, and we had, of course, this great snowpack you wanted to come and enjoy, so it was really interesting for me this year to really start to see the, the fruits of your labor in reaching out to new markets and attracting people in, and sure enough, I had a chance to, to chat with a few of them, so it was a lot of fun. So with that, we'll go ahead and thank you for the update, and, and thank you for sitting through everything to get you to the update. We'll now go back to our 10:30 timed item, this is the transient occupancy tax program, this is, our board is being asked to receive a status report on the revised and amended TOT ordinance.
Morning.
Afternoon, I apologize, afternoon, yes.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
Chairman Yule, members of the board, my name is Doug Jastro, I am the Revenue Services Manager, also the Tax Administrator for the Placer County Transient Occupancy Tax. So the item before you today is to receive a status report of the transient occupancy tax program in general, and also in particular, the recent implementation of the TOT ordinance update that your board approved last December. So, when last your board received a status update of the TOT program, we had certificates numbering back in October 23 of last year, 4,706, currently, we are looking at 5,151, so it's an increase of approximately 500 certificates, partially due to the fact that the ordinance update requires a single certificate per parcel. the ordinance update requires a single certificate per parcel number, but also indicative of the consistent increase in revenue as well as certificate holders with the TOT program. If you look at 10 years ago, fiscal year 2008, 2009, the total number of TOT certificates were 2,287. So more than doubled in the past 10 years. And that also goes for the revenue that Placer County has received from owners and operators that collect the tax and remit it to Revenue Services with Placer County. Let's see, last year, the TOT that was remitted was 18.5 approximately. And as you can see, at this point last year, to get to that 18.5, we were at 13.7 million. And currently, through March, we are at 15.3, over a 12% increase. And again, just putting that into perspective, looking back 10 years, we were at 8.9 million at the fiscal year 08, 09. So just to show you where we're at right now and where we've come from with the TOT And then getting to the ordinance update that was approved by your board in December, went into effect on January 3rd, 2019. It was designed to clarify certain items in the code, incorporate community and operator input, and also to help streamline operations. These needs became apparent over the years, and the fact that they were addressed in December by your board has provided us with a great opportunity to improve the program. So the attachments that we currently have that were approved, just a summary of them, additional guest receipt requirements, acknowledgement of public health and safety code compliance, the good neighbor fact sheet posted in each unit, which has been referred to a couple of times already today, TOT certificate number included on all advertisements, both print and online, real and personal property leans on delinquent accounts, individual certificates per parcel, local contact information requirement, and then as well, the appeals process, including a third-party mediator, mediator within that process. All right. So what we've learned from getting that TOT ordinance update to the point where it was, where we're at right now, where we're able to really utilize it and improve the program, is that the lessons that we learned from that is that community outreach was really something that we wanted to emphasize going forward, since it was a lesson learned in the ordinance update process. What we've done so far is, with the direction that we received from the board, was to, again, provide that clarity to, to operators. What we've done so far, once the ordinance has been updated, we've had several meetings with stakeholders, with operators, with the public. There's been one each month since the ordinance has been updated. They've been in West Placer County and several in Eastern Placer County. We've sent out the TOT ordinance, the revised ordinance booklet. We've sent that to each certificate holder in January, along with an ordinance update guide, showing them the details of what's been changed and what the new requirements are, a taxable item list, which is new, basically spelling out exactly what the traditional, typical taxable items have been in the past, and non-taxable items that are in accordance with the TOT ordinance. And then as well, also included with all certificate holders in a mailing, was the Tax Administrator Determination Memo. And I want to talk a little bit about the taxable items list and the Tax Administrator Determination Memo. One, because they're new. And also, it's just, it's a good illustration of showing exactly how we utilized public outreach to really refine our process and get the, the product that we were looking for on this. So this shows a brief outline of where we were in getting the ordinance update, that process. When we met with your board in November, there was direction from the board to take cancellation fees, which was traditionally a taxable item, and move that to a non-taxable item. In December, we created our inaugural taxable items list, we distributed that. It had cancellations as non-taxable, but once we brought that to an outreach meeting with operators, they were able to point out, as subject matter experts, that cancellations was really more of a category and not necessarily a single line item. They were able to point out that no-show charges, forfeited deposits, and early departure fees were also included in the cancellation category. So we were able to take that information, that feedback from operators, look at other jurisdictions with similarly situated TOT, do that research, also use the consulting services of our firm that handles our compliance audits, as well as having a review by county council. All of these things pointed in the direction that we needed to refine and revise the taxable items list to include these no-shows, early cancellation fees. So we revised the taxable list in January 9th and distributed that information to all certificate holders on January 22nd. And included in that distribution on January 22nd was the Tax Administrator Determination Memo, which is basically something that, again, we received as far as feedback from operators, that they wanted clarity when changes were being made. This provides an explanation of when any kind of interpretation of the ordinance is being made, and it, it spells that out for all the operators. So here is just what the taxable items list looks like, revised for January 2019. And aside from the recent direction from the board on cancella, cancellations, the, the list here, just wanted to point out that what we're looking at here, these are historically identified taxable and non-taxable items. The list did not, when it came out, even though it's new, did not include new policy on this. These, again, are historically taxable, non-taxable items, and it was merely made to establish clarity for people that were collecting the taxes. And here's a look at what the Tax Administrator Determination Memo looks like. We have one right now explaining the particulars of the revisions to the taxable items list concerning cancellations. And again, the determination process was operator feedback, standard industry practice, and then review by county council. And just to let you know, that we have a few potential Tax Administrator Determination Memos in the works on this. One, to clarify the definition of a mandatory charge. And the second, to provide instruction or clarity for operators on how best to comply with the TOT ordinance when faced with certain limitations from online platforms, which has been quite a bit of feedback that we received from our outreach meetings over the past several months. And this, just to let you know, the taxable items list, as well as the Tax Administrator Determination Memo, both are up on the TOT newly revised website, and were also distributed to all certificate holders. So where we are going next with the TOT program? Again, lessons learned, sustained community engagement. We have in the works currently a TOT handbook that will, again, incorporate the taxable, non-taxable items list. That's just going to be one section of that, but something that provides that understanding, transparency for certificate holders, for operators, knowing exactly how to best comply with the TOT ordinance. Also, a traditional annual meeting. Feedback that we've had from the most recent outreach meetings was that a best practice on that would be to hold a webinar, because so many certificate holders aren't necessarily in Placer County. And then also, the regular electronic publication of a newsletter, working on that as well. Next, revised taxable items list and the Tax Administrator Memos that go along with that, when appropriate. We are currently wrapping up our latest round of compliance audits with our firm on that for the Eastern Slope properties. And then, of course, continued implementation of the remaining items that were included in the TOT ordinance update. So with that, I conclude my presentation, be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Any board members have any questions or comments on the report? Supervisor Gustafson.
I just wanted to, I don't have any questions, thank you. I wanted to thank both you and county CEO, staff, Jennifer and Erin, for engaging the business community as you did in, in this ordinance revisions and the processes you've developed. I think that was very helpful. And pertaining to a lot of the public comment we heard earlier today, I do know that our businesses that are collecting huge amounts of this transient occupancy tax, our property management firms, are probably most concerned that we be proactive in addressing some of those community concerns, because so much of their livelihood, so much of the vitality of our community relies on those, and really trying to find some solutions there. So I encourage continued discussion with all of them. They are, want to be very proactive in that discussion.
Absolutely. And, and that's our goal as well, is that any opportunity that we can to engage with, with them and have that partnership, we will.
Great. Seeing no other comments from my colleagues, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? All right, seeing none, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you, Derek.
And moving on to our 11 o'clock timed item, this is annual update, North Tahoe Business Association and Tahoe City Downtown Association. Morning.
Good morning.
Afternoon. What am I thinking?
Yes, good afternoon.
Sorry.
I'm Emily Sutter with the Tahoe CEO's Office. Many of you formerly know me as with the Planning Department for the county in Auburn. Today, I'd like to introduce two of our partners who promote community engagement and economic development in North Lake Tahoe. Joy Doyle, Executive Director of the North Tahoe Business Association, and Kylie Bigelow, Executive Director of the Tahoe City Downtown Association. The contracts the county has with both of these organizations focus on community vitality and economic development, events, promotions and marketing, community design, and small business support. Both of these organizations host a suite of community events in North Lake Tahoe that are very popular, including the Tahoe City Food and Wine Classic, the Passport to Dining, fireworks around the Fourth of July, and the Music on the Beach Summer Concert Series in Kings Beach and Tahoe City. So now I'll hand it off to Joy Doyle and to Kylie Bigelow to share their highlights from the past year and focus on their efforts moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I know we're all getting hungry, so bear with me, I'll try to keep this light and fun. Thank you, Emily, for the introduction, Chairman Yuler, members of the board, Mr. Leopold. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide you with information about the North Tahoe Business Association, what we've been up to lately, and what we have planned in the fiscal year ahead. I publicly want to recognize Cindy and congratulate her on her appointment and your first Board of Supervisors meeting.
Thank you.
So the fundamentals, NTBA is a nonprofit member-based organization. We were founded in 1979. This year marks our 40th anniversary, which is super exciting. Our mission, to improve economic vitality and quality of life in the communities of North Lake Tahoe. Our purpose is twofold, to support businesses with communications, marketing, resources, networking and training, and to market NTBA's district as vibrant and a unique sense of place. We serve Carnelian Bay, Crystal Bay, Tahoe Vista, and Kings Beach, which is our main commercial corridor. NTBA has been partnering with Placer County to successfully implement the Main Street approach since 2004. We effectively leverage your investment with thousands of volunteer hours, hundreds of thousands of dollars raised from external sources, and through increased organizational capacity. At the core of NTBA are our members. We are proud that our membership has grown 39% since 2010. We ended 2018 with 216 members. We currently have 220 members, showing that our membership base is strong. And now I'll move on to a few recent highlights and accomplishments, other than membership, that is. NTBA is well-known and loved for many community events that we produce, as Emily mentioned. Events are one of the main ways that we market our district, as they build awareness and drive visitation to NTBA's district and Main Street Kings Beach members. Each year, the complexity and resources required to produce events increases, and despite this, our events continue to receive generous support, which is an important revenue source for our organization, and events create lasting memories for area visitors. Our event attendance and gross revenues are at an all-time high. And now I'll move on to our community design focus area, which relates to our town's aesthetics and cleanliness. We've put a lot of energy into this focus area lately. In October, the first of two public art pieces was installed in downtown Kings Beach in the Bear Street Roundabout. This is a project of Tahoe Public Art, which incubated in our design committee. And NTBA has been intimately involved and financially supportive of bringing public art to our area, not only to NTBA's district, but the area in general. And we are pleased to see our and your board and staff's many years of effort and support come to fruition in this beautiful art piece. We look forward to a second art piece scheduled to be installed in the Coon Street Roundabout very soon. In addition to our engagement in the new CAP committee throughout the year, NTBA applied and was successful at receiving a Tourism Master Plan grant. The grant provided matching dollars for a year-round roofline LED lighting program in Kings Beach. The goal is to provide consistent lighting and make downtown more welcoming and inviting to visitors and residents. 27 buildings opted in last fall and before Christmas. The roofline lights were installed, don't they look beautiful? NTBA will do remaining outreach to business and property owners to get more building rooflines lit later this year. Through the passion and leadership of several NTBA board members and staff, we developed a clean team to address Kings Beach's growing trash issues and to supplement the maintenance assessment district services that are provided through Placer County. We created a work plan and through outreach gathered a group of actually over 60 volunteers willing to assist with our efforts. Also, through outreach efforts, 36 of 76 Main Street Kings Beach business and property owners opted into our new Main Street litter-free program, which basically means they're agreeing to go out and front and around their property at least once a week and pick up trash. Many of these people are doing it, obviously, on, on a daily basis. We will soon distribute these lovely window decals to the participants. We're providing recognition to them on our website, and we will soon outreach to others to increase participation, improve our area's appearance, and our guest experience. Now, switching to economic vitality focus area, we are collaborating on planning and funding for new directional signs to Kings Beach public parking lots, and for a cross, crossing guard pilot program to gather data to determine if a mechanized pedestrian signal may improve traffic flows during the peak summer season. We continue to be anxious for the Kings Beach former RDA parcels to be sold and developed into viable businesses, and we are fully engaged in and are disseminating information to our constituents about two big projects in our area, the Kings Beach Center and Eastern Gateway Projects. NTBA has participated- NTBA has participated on the Mountain Housing Council Short Term Tiger Team, Short Term, excuse me, Rental Tiger Team, and we also sat on the housing panel for your board earlier this year. We're very dedicated to assisting with solving the housing crisis in our area, which is obviously directly impacting our local businesses. As a dynamic organization, we evolve and expand our services as needed to benefit of you, you, the county, our members and our community. And for the remainder of this year and into 2020, in addition to all of our ongoing Main Street efforts, we plan to refresh our strategic plan because we've already accomplished in three years what we set out to accomplish in five, which is amazing, thanks to my board and communities and staff. We work with your staff, we are working with your staff to develop and assist with the grassroots Kings Beach economic development strategy, new summertime transportation initiatives, including a park-and-ride pilot program and a bike-share program. And we're also exploring a new Kings Beach Benefit Assessment District to expand and improve services. We will continue our ongoing collaborative work, including the co-production of the area's leadership program and participation on the Business Association and Chamber Collaborative, including exploration and potential adoption of a TBIT. And before I conclude my presentation, I did want you to be aware that after nearly eight years of being the Executive Director of the North Tahoe Business Association, I have announced that I'm going to be stepping down, so just recently on Friday. So I wanted you all to be aware of that. This decision, obviously, has not been an easy one. I have so enjoyed working with all of you and our community, and it's truly been a highlight of my career. I'm incredibly proud of all that we've accomplished together, the board, the NTBA board, my board president is here, Greg Mutino. Raise your hand. We are actively searching for mine replacement. We have a plan in place. I want to assure you that you have our commitment that we will follow through diligently on all our county contract deliverables and commitments. And just to let you know, it's not going to be anytime soon. I'm going to stay through July 30th, assuming nobody steps up sooner than that and gets transitioned sooner than that. So I just wanted to make you all aware of it, and thank you for your ongoing support. In conclusion, on behalf of the Board of Directors, staff, and the communities we serve, thank you so much for your strong and ongoing support of our organization and our mission. And now I'll take any questions if you have.
Well, thank you. Questions or comments by my colleague Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, Joy, I just wanted to thank you for your friendship over the last eight years I guess you've been doing this, and I really appreciate the presentations. You are give us clear, concise presentations that are easily understandable, and I want to thank you for your hard work over the last eight years.
Thank you so much.
And wish you well.
I'm not going anywhere, not hurting, contrary to rumors.
Supervisor Gustafson.
I wanted to ditto that, Joy. You've been a great partner and a leader in our community, and thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
All right. I don't see any other comments or questions. Thank you so much, Joy, for everything.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm sure yours will be coming up momentarily.
All right, so I'll start by introducing myself and then thank you guys for the opportunity to present. My name is Kylie Bigelow. I am the new Executive Director of the Tahoe City Downtown Association. I've been on the job for three months, but I have been living in Tahoe City for seven years. My husband and his family do own a small business in Tahoe City, so my heart is in it, and a lot of my friends, as I've been meeting them too in the last few months. I'm really attached to the business owners here in Tahoe City and happy to be stepping in and moving this organization forward. And this is my cover. All right, a little summary on the mission and vision of the organization. We are dedicated to the promotion and enhancement of Tahoe City through innovation, leadership, advocacy, and events. And we serve as a local voice for Tahoe City to maintain a vibrant and prosperous place to live, work, and play and visit, and we want to make Tahoe City America's best mountain This is our Board of Directors up here, so we have 11 Board of Directors from a variety of businesses in the area. They all serve a two-year term, and it's been wonderful getting to know them and working with them so far. We also have a small but mighty staff. It's myself and then two others. The other two staff members and some have been working for the organization for 15 years, so they've been great to have on board when I'm just starting. So a summary of our Placer County contract, so we received $85,000 from the county for these four deliverables. First one is about events and visitor enhancement, then promotion, marketing, after that catalyst for economic vitality, and then lastly organizational capacity and administrative support. So this is a quick snapshot of our budget, of our finances for the year. As you can see, some highlights on there is our three big chunks of revenue is from the Placer County contract, sponsorships, and then event revenue. So we are trying to build up certain events for more revenue and then sponsorships from year to year. Here's a snapshot of our membership currently. We have 205 members. I think something that's interesting to me as I'm just learning this organization is that 26% of them are professional services, so that's your photographers, your videographers, your consultants. When I first stepped into this, you may assume most of it's brick and mortar, retail restaurants. That's, you know, actually a smaller chunk than a lot of our professional services. So interesting fact there. All right, so events are the cornerstone of our organization. Events is what everybody knows us for, loves us for, and we do really, really well. So these are our top four events in the community, so Fourth of July, Concerts at Commons. Concerts at Commons is 12-week series. We see 30,000 visitors and locals in attendance. Food and Wine Classic, I'm going to speak more to that in a moment. Oktoberfest, I'm also going to touch on that in a moment. So the Food and Wine Classic was rebranded last year. It used to be called the Tahoe City Wine Walk. Mostly, everybody still calls it the Tahoe City Wine Walk. We're getting there. We wanted to call the Food and Wine Classic to give food some attention as well because a lot of our restaurants put a lot of work into what they serve. We added a new event the day before called Grab Your Glass, so we encourage people to come up on Friday, hopefully stay till Sunday or extend their stay. And 65% of guests stayed in Placer County. Oktoberfest, so we increased attendance by 7%. We sold out of all of our beer mugs, so that's 2,000 beer mugs, and we were able to host it with a partnership with the PUD at Commons Beach. So that made it more of a family-friendly event, and if you just wanted to go to the beach, you could go to the beach, listen to some polka. You didn't have to be drinking beer, so it was for everybody. 58% of guests stayed in Placer County. So the second focus area of our contract is promotion, so we use a lot of our promotion to serve our members. So this is our website and event calendar. We ask our members to send events, and we share what they have going on. So that's our number-one intention. And we send out emails to over 5,000 subscribers, both locals and tourists. Other side of promotion is social media. Just since I've started, our Facebook has increased by 25% of followers and Instagram by 18%. That has a lot to do with the big winter we had. Everyone likes to see photos of snow. So Visit Tahoe City is our domain for both of those. Marketing, so we are lucky to have great partnerships with a lot of media, local media partners here. We're able to leverage $20,000 in trade for advertising our events and supporting our members. So I want to thank those local media partners. In addition to local, we also are, Tahoe City has been featured nationally. I think my favorite one I've seen so far was the Alaska Airlines, the Alaska Airlines story. So it talked about their experience in Tahoe City specifically and highlighted a lot of our members. Even story told about her morning at a Tahoe house, how she noticed the barista knew magically every single person's name. So that makes me feel happy inside to highlight that to the nation. Community design, the final part of the marketing and promotions. So we work hard to highlight Tahoe City and make it beautiful and make it welcoming and make it warm and make it bright. So last year, there was 70 flower baskets, which is $6,000 in donations for those, and also the Tahoe Tree Company donates the flowers themselves. Event banners, so that's TCD events and partner events. We put up 110 banners. Downtown lighting, we have 15,000 feet of lighting, which was $10,000 in donations. So if you remember back to when it gets dark at 5:00 p.m., you'll remember why those lights are important. So moving on to the third part of our county contract is economic vitality. So I work closely with the board to inform and engage our members and with the county. We work on all these projects together. I work with my board to get as much information as I can and disseminate to our members. So things that have come up this year is the Fanny Bridge Project, Tahoe City Lodge, Tahoe City Firehouse, different housing projects, and the Tahoe City Mobility Study. So our board is deciding on a new strategic plan currently, and these are our five focus areas. So they're pretty similar to what we've been doing before. The differences are really focusing on community issues and where we stand on those, and educating our members, economic vitality, and then membership, too. So not just membership dues, since those potentially could go away, but membership engagement and really talking to our members and listening to our members. So the future of Tahoe City here, we have our new strategic plan should be adopted next month for 2021. We're going to focus on our members, membership benefits, membership engagement, and continue to increase economic vitality in Tahoe City through events, and inform and engage our members on Tahoe City projects. So we want to serve as the local voice for Tahoe City to be a vibrant, prosperous place to live, work, play, and visit. So I want to thank you guys for all of your support and for welcoming me in my first three months, so I hope to see you guys a lot more and continue to learn from our partners in the area. Thank you.
Any board members have any questions or comments on that report? I don't see any. Thank you so much.
Check those publics.
Oh, yeah, good. Thank you for the reminder. On the item in general, now that we've heard both the North Tahoe Business Association and Tahoe City Downtown Association, are there any members of the public that want to address the board on either of those reports? Okay, we'll go ahead and accept those reports and move on to our 11:30 timed item. This is a Cedar item, project filing fee schedule and MOU with TRPA.
Good afternoon, Chairman Euler, members of the board. I'm Steve Olney of the Planning Services Division in the Tahoe office. And whatever you would before you today is request to update the fee schedule for the Tahoe Regional Bank Agency memorandum of understanding. As you're aware, Placer County has had an MOU with TRPA since 1995, and this was most recently updated in 2017. This MOU allows county staff to issue certain TRPA permits on TRPA's behalf. There are a number of benefits to moving forward with the MOU, and they're all centered around customer service-related items. It helps to alleviate the need to go down to TRPA in South Lake Tahoe, as well as allows for a little bit more collaboration and consistency in the permit review itself. As part of the adoption of the MOU in 2017, your board also adopted an application filing fee schedule, and this fee schedule was based on TRPA's fee schedule that was in place at the time. Since that time, TRPA has adopted a new fee schedule that went into effect on January 31st of this year, and because of that, we're before your board today seeking approval to revise the county TRPA MOU fee schedule accordingly. As part of the MOU, the county processes the applicant's payment for the application itself, and this includes the application fee as well as any applicable mitigation fees. The MOU that was adopted states that TRPA will accept 10% of the application fee. The mitigation fees themselves, it's 100% pass-through on fees that are collected for that. Historically, how the county has addressed the fees that are collected is we retain the base fee with TRPA and then add the 10% fee on to that as well. And essentially, that's what we're suggesting your board does today. So what changes have occurred since to result in TRPA changing their fee schedule? TRPA had last updated their fee schedule in 2005, and at the time, the fee schedule did not allow for an annual adjustment based on Consumer Price Index. So their new fee schedule does, in fact, build the annual CPI adjustment into it that occurs at the first of the year. All but one of the applications also increased, and a lot of this had to do with the fact that no adjustments had occurred since 2005 for that. The one application type that did not increase and actually resulted in a 50% decrease was the site assessment, and this is an application that helps residential property owner determine what their development potential is for their property. TRPA saw this as a way to help alleviate some of the burden on someone seeking to improve their property, particularly since occasionally these applications can actually result in them finding out that they don't have as much development potential as they might have So staff has since analyzed TRPA's new fee schedule and taken into account the increase and decrease and determined that the fees that would be collected would be enough to compensate for the staff's time they've spent on the applications. We will, however, continue to monitor the collection of fees based on the hour spent to continue to determine that that's inappropriate amount to collect. So with all that, staff's recommendation is that you adopt the new fee schedule and do that by adopting the resolution for the Placer County and TRPA project final fee schedule that's contained within this staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions should you have any.
Okay. Board members have any questions on the modifications being proposed to the fee schedule, which is Exhibit A, page 634 of our board member packet? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, any members of the public have any questions or comments on this proposed fee schedule prior to us taking action? All right, let's pledge the board.
Second?
Motion, Holmes, second legant. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you so much. Our 3:40 timed item is the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Proposed Contract Extension and Budget Revision.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to my presentation report here.
Okay.
Erica Casey with the County Executive Office. I'm here today to present to your board the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation Proposed Contract Extension as well as a budget revision. I note that there are several members from the board present here today, as well as our executive director, Jill Milne. So I imagine after my presentation concludes, they may come up and provide you with additional information or clarify any points I've made. The presentation objectives include providing a summary to your board about the project and the process related to the contracts themselves, also to review project history of TOT funds that have been allocated to the project since 2008, seeking guidance from your board on how to move forward with the proposed revisions to the contract, and then identifying a path forward to ensure positive outcomes. And that is really why I'm here today, is to seek that guidance from your board so that we can identify a path to move forward so that deliverables are achieved and the outcomes are successful. And then just to provide you with a brief presentation to overview, a little bit of project history, I already mentioned this about the grant awards. I do want to specifically provide some details on the 2017 grant award. I do want to specifically provide some details on the 2017 grant award, which is the source of funds for the contract that we'll be discussing today. The original proposal that I received from the museum foundation as it relates to the changes to the budget as well as the contract extension, a staff recommendation, and then board discussion and direction. The proposed Squaw Valley Snow Sports Museum is a proposed 16,000 square foot facility. This is based on information that we received, the project description recently. It would include exhibit space and visitor information desk, a multipurpose room for events, theater, meeting hall, event space, as well as a gift shop, bookstore, and potential snack bar. And again, if the organization can certainly elaborate on any of these points if your boards has questions about the details of the project. Also, the preferred site, as you know, is in Squaw Valley Park, which we've talked about with your board on previous occasions. TOT funding history. The first allocation of transient occupancy tax funds to the project was back in March of 2008, and this for $12,000. This was when the Resort Association was recommending expenditures to your board tied to infrastructure and towards the master plan priorities in the community. The funds were to create the 501(c)(3) because the nonprofit organization had not been created yet, also to develop the business plan for the project and hire consultants. Then later in October 2008, an additional $100,000 was recommended by the Resort Association to your board for approval, which your board did approve, to complete a site evaluation, a museum master plan, and then estimated operations costs. Then the following March in 2009, another $100,000 awarded to continue the museum master plan development as well as the business plan, to put together a capital campaign to raise funds for the project, and then final site selection. Then in October of 2017, several years later, your board approved a contract for $125,000 in transient occupancy tax dollars. This was as recommended by the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association to fund architectural and engineering studies to complete an environmental questionnaire tied to the project and submit that to the Community Development Resources Agency, as well as to conduct public outreach in the community. The process to approve these grants, I'll just want to provide a brief overview for you. The funds were recommended by the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. They were, the proposals were grant applications that had to be filled out. They then went to a committee of the Resort Association, and then that committee would recommend those expenditures to the board, and then the board would make a recommendation ultimately to your board. After those projects were approved, and generally when that project list was brought to your board, it was a summary of each project and the total allocation that was being recommended. Once your board approved those allocations, the Resort Association then contracted directly with the organization for those services. In October of 2016, we did change that process, and the contract management of these grants was transferred over to Placer County. And this was through a process between the county and the Resort Association, really evaluating their programs and areas that we could work together and maybe make some changes. And so we did do that. The significant difference, and that is, the contracts came back to your board for approval, whereas in the past, the contracts were vetted by the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association's board. So the Resort Association had still recommended the projects. Once your board approved those summaries, we then brought contracts back to your board with additional details, including the scope of work, the budget, the timeline, the schedule, all based on the original grant application for approval. And then once those contracts were approved by your board, they were then managed by the county executive office. This provides a bit of detail as it relates to this specific project and that process I just outlined for you. The first time we brought anything forward to your board on this particular grant allocation was in February of 2017. That was after the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association Board had approved the recommendation that came forward at that time. It included a list of projects, several projects, in fact, over $2 million in recommended projects, and the Ski Museum was one of those recommended projects. Now with that, there were two contingencies that were recommended associated with the award for these funds as well as the subsequent contract brought back to your board. That included an audit of the financials that were allocated or the funds that were allocated to the museum foundation in 2008 and 2009. That totaled over $212,000, and so there was a contingency that that had to take place. And if that was successful, then we could bring a contract forward to your board. We did also have a second contingency, however, tied to the deed restriction on Squaw Valley Park, and the contingency included a determination by the Forest Service that the project was not in violation of that deed restriction. I bring those two contingencies up because they definitely impacted the timeframe between when your board initially approved the allocation and then when the contract actually came to your board for final approval. We did bring on October of 2017, a contract to your board for $125,000 in TOT funds. There was a match of $168,000 that was proposed by the museum foundation in the original grant application and included as part of that approved budget and contract. The contract term was October 23rd, 2017, which is the day your board approved the contract through June 30 of 2018. I also want to mention that the budget, the proposed scope, and the contract term were consistent with the original grant application that was proposed by the museum foundation. So that is the basis for any of these contracts that we develop. Invoice processing, just want to provide you with a quick overview of how we address invoices in our office. Expenses tied to our grant contracts are submitted first to our office for review. We always refer to the budget in the approved contract as well as the scope of work when we're reviewing those expenditures to make sure that they're consistent with the board approved contract, the budget, and ensure that the deliverables are going to be met. Once we do that analysis, if there are no questions or missing information, then that information gets sent down to Auburn and it's reviewed one more time by staff down there before a check is processed or payment is processed, I should say. So we really rely on the county's policies and procedures as it relates to contract management and invoice processing to really determine when to process payment and when to seek additional information. As it relates to this $125,000 contract, we have made one payment in the amount of $51,326 to the organization. That leaves us with a contract balance of $73,673. Here are a few issues that we'd like to talk with your board about in terms of addressing. The first is that the contract did expire on June 30, 2018. And the reason that's important is because there were expenses incurred by the organization related to this project after that expiration date. I will also mention that there were expenses that were submitted to the county executive office that were incurred prior to that initial approval from your board in February of 2017. And then some of the expenses that were submitted to us were not consistent with that contract budget. So there were line items in the budget that were identified to be funded by the Ski Museum as the match, and then TOT would fund other line items. And so we were receiving some expenses that were originally to be funded by the museum foundation. So that made it challenging for us to process payment for some of those expenses. The Ski Museum proposal, or at least the original proposal that I received, this was a couple of months ago, so it may have changed certainly, and I think that the representatives here will be able to elaborate on that if there are changes. But the first is to actually extend the contract term, to revise the budget to support payment for expenses that weren't included in the original budget, primarily really to allocate TOT to support line items that the organization had originally committed to fund themselves. Those were the, that's the majority of some of the changes in that budget. Also to process payment for expenses incurred before the contract was approved by your board in October, and then after the contract expired as well. Then to use the contract balance, so if the, if your board were to approve this proposal, then the balance on the contract would fund expenses already incurred by the organization. And the museum foundation committed to raising the additional funds necessary to complete the environmental questionnaire, which was the key deliverable tied to this contract. And the estimates that I received from them to complete the environmental questionnaire was around $45,000. Here are a few other potential challenges tied to the proposal. The first is that processing payment prior to the contract date. We talked with council about whether or not we can even do this legally, and the guidance that we were given is that we cannot do that. And I think that council could certainly elaborate on that if you have questions. The contract balance funds prior expenses, there would be no funding left to complete the environmental questionnaire or the TOT grant deliverables. If the original contract expense categories are revised to fund original match, there'd be no funding left. I already said that, sorry. It's a duplicate. No certainty that the funds would be raised by the organization to complete the work. And revising the budget to accommodate expenses not in the original budget could have impacts to our grant program. And this is just something for you to take into consideration. It's not common practice for us to revise grant budgets or contracts because they are vetted by a community organization, right now the CAP Committee, formerly the Resort Association. So those details, the budgets, the committed match, are part of the scoring process when the organization, when the CAP Committee, formerly the Resort Association, was assessing each project. So for us, when it comes to requests revised budget, we're very limited in terms of how much of that or how flexible we can be there. And then we certainly have not revised budgets so that we can go back in time and compensate an organization for expenses that they incurred in the past. Staff does have a recommendation for your consideration, and I think there's a lot of consistency with what I had originally received from the museum foundation, at least in some of the recommendations, but certainly open to any feedback and direction that your board may have. One is to extend the contract term through to the end of the year, just to ensure there is adequate time for the organization to complete the work. Process payment for expenses incurred after the contract expired, so June 30, 2018, that were consistent with the original budget presented to the organization. So that would be about $13,000 that we would process payment for. Then we would apply the contract balance, which would be roughly $60,000, to completing the environmental questionnaire and additional work that's needed so that we are able to achieve that deliverable. And then we're seeking direction from your board to direct us perhaps to work with the foundation to develop that revised contract and budget that we could then bring back to you. So this could be a two-step process. Other issues to consider, the federal deed restriction on Squaw Valley Park property, this is something we've talked about with you at length. U.S. Forest Service has been noncommittal regarding that deed restriction and whether or not the project would be in violation of that deed restriction. There's uncertainty regarding the required level of environmental analysis, whether that would be an EIR or an MMD. There is both public opposition but also support to developing the museum in the park and developing the museum project in general. And I'll also add that the project concept and the funding was supported by the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association as well as their subcommittees for a number of years to fund the project planning here. So there is a significant amount of community support to see a museum developed in our And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions that your board may have.
Any board members have any questions before we hear from the representatives of the Ski Museum? I should say the Olympic Museum. It's not just skiing. There are other sports, I hear, associated with the Winter Olympics. I don't see any questions for board members, so at this time, I'll go ahead and invite Representative of the Olympic Museum effort to come forward and address the board.
Good afternoon. I'm Bill Clark. I'm a longtime board member of the foundation.
And I'm Jill Short Milne. I'm the executive director of the foundation.
So actually, I want to thank the board and welcome the new members to the board. It's exciting to see new folks. And we really do appreciate the staff bringing this forward with the ability for us and the board to take action to find a solution to this grant. So some of that we've just seen for the first time, it was on the slide, so I'm not going to address some of that, but do have a couple of quick points to make before we take some questions. The first one doesn't really have to do with the grant, but we've been, in the last year, we've been through a very extensive marketing and branding workshop sort of process, and with the help of a nationally recognized branding firm, we actually have a new name for the museum. And what was in the report is partially correct. It's the Sierra Nevada and Olympic Winter Sports Museum, which will be known as their acronym, the Snow Sports Museum. So that's a long process for us, and we're pretty excited about it. We did public surveys, we did random surveys, and it was really extensive. So back to the grant. So a couple of things to clarify here on the timing of all this. When the grant was first approved in February of 2017, as you know, it was put on hold for those two issues, the audit and the Forest Service question. The audit was done within a month and submitted and was successful. Also, in March of 2017, the county council's office issued an opinion on whether or not the museum as proposed would be in conflict with the deed. And we know the deed's a big issue, and I've got some other things to say on that. But from that point, from March of 2017, as you know, we didn't see the signed contract until that next, that next October. So there was a period there where we were trying to move forward, and right or wrong, we went forward with some of the EQ process. And so that's part of the issue here, is some of those expenses that we incurred before that contract actually came to you months later in October. And as a result of that, the contract got compressed to an eight-month period. So it made it really hard for us to get through all the different EQ processes through the whole thing. And then, being part of a new process, I feel like we were sort of the test child with some of this. When the grant was done and when the contract was signed in November, we received instructions in November on how to submit, and we began submitting invoices. And then that next April, we received word from the county's office that we needed to redo those in a different format, which we did. So there was a long period there, and then that next October is when we finally got the first payment. So it was a pretty long, drawn-out thing, and since then, the contract has expired. So I guess part of what we're saying is, as you consider action on this, is we would appreciate the benefit of the doubt on the way this whole process worked and some of the challenges for us and for the county staff, no fault of anybody, but that's just sort of the way it all played out. Regarding the deed restriction, we know from the county council's office opinion, and we know from our own legal opinion that we had done, that technically, the project as envisioned would not be in violation of the deed. But we understand that that isn't enough. And so we're committed to working with the county staff to find creative solutions to satisfy the risk that is associated with granting the museum the ability to bring the facility to the park. So that's part of what I wanted to convey today. Jill can fill in anything I might have missed or any questions you might have.
Go ahead and...
I would just add that what we did provide to Placer staff was a detailed revised budget that also had the opportunity to amend certain line items based on the fact that this contract was, the proposal was put together in 2016. It was approved in 2017, and it was being fulfilled in mostly 2018. And it is hard to project what you think the actual specific items are down to the penny, what they would be applied to. The items on the proposed, as revised budget, did total the $73,000, and they are businesses, local businesses, consultants, and all, all of the work that was done went directly to support those line items that are already on the approved contract, which would be engineering, architectural, public outreach, and anything that supported the future of completing the EQ process.
Okay. Any questions by board members of the museum folks at this time? Okay, I'm seeing none right now. I'm going to go ahead and open up for any public comment and then we'll bring it back to the board for a little bit of conversation about this, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any members of the public want to address the board on this item, part of the board taking any action? Step on forward, please. State your name for the record and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
My name's Ed Henelwell. I'm a forty-year resident of Squaw Valley and have been following this park operation all along. I was essential, actually, historically in the nineties to getting this park established. This museum controversy's been going on for ten years. I think no one opposes the idea of the ski museum, per se, as it celebrates the history of skiing in the Sierras as well as the momentous Olympics we had in the sixties. The controversy, though, is where to locate the museum. I know that's not the question right here, right now, but it's essential and critical. There's a lot of history here. The museum folks just keep saying over and over again, intransigent and fixated on placing their museum in the park. But problematically and historically, this park took an act of Congress and President Clinton's signature in 1998 to get the Secretary of the Interior to direct the Department of Agriculture, to direct the U.S. Forest Service to sell these thirty-five acres to the county at a bargain rate. And it was for the purpose of creating a community recreational park. The deed restriction has been mentioned. The, and it's critical because it puts this whole thing at risk that you're spending money on. It specifically prohibits commercial operations in the park. This is the dilemma. In May of 2017, as much as Eli Alano, the supervisor of the Tahoe National Forest, defined that he was, had to be noncommittal, he did say that the museum, quote, "could meet the threshold of a commercial operation and the United States could consider termination of that deed in the future." He further stated in his interviews with the U.S. Forest Service representatives who were present at the time in the late 1990s and were part of the original sale, that that museum would not be consistent with the original intent of the sale. We just don't know what's going to be proposed there. For ten years, we've been waiting for this EQ, we've been waiting for their model, we've been waiting for an analysis, would this be a commercial operation? And we still haven't got it. If I may quote you, four years ago, it was a press release, I don't have your exact quote, but about four years ago, in the 2015 meeting, when you presided three-to-one vote to allow consideration of building the museum in the park, you said, "Nothing gets built unless private money can be raised." The park site is where the foundation is telling us they will be successful. Let's see if the foundation can be successful in raising the money. Well, it sounds like they've fallen short once again. In February 2017, you granted this hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, if they could match the amount in private funding. It sounds like they're falling short. They promised us a fall, a 2018 presentation of an actual plan, an environmental impact statement, and a financial budget that we could find and analyze to see if they had crossed that line that Eli Alano had alluded to on a deed restriction of commercial property. All right, let me just finish.
Go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, again, I'm not opposed to much in the museum, but just the location is really bothering me and I think it's risky. So, let me just say, I would say I would not recommend extending their timeline. They haven't been able to do this for ten years. Let them raise their private money, then come back and build a specific plan, a business model, and a sustainable budget that shows that they will be successful. And most importantly, that they will not be at that commercial operation that's looming out there. Remember, the Squaw Valley Park was built for recreation. The museum proposal, at least what we know of it, would be stealing from our children, taking valuable land from what could be expanded for future recreational use. Leave the park as the legacy to our children it was meant to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board on this item? Okay, we'll go ahead and bring this back to the board for conversation here. Question, counsel, it's been stated that we have, that your office has issued an opinion that any of the contract expenditures that were incurred prior to the execution of the contract in October of seventeen, is that right? October 23rd of seventeen, that those are not, we cannot consider reimbursement for those, is that correct?
That's correct. Based on our, excuse me, basic contract law as well as the contract procedures of the county, once the contract was approved by the board in October 27th of seventeen, that triggered the obligations and the rights under the contract for reimbursement. The problem is that, my understanding is, there's been several expenses that have been produced that were prior to that time. For us to suddenly reach back prior to the start of the contract would probably be a gift of public funds.
So even though the board did actually take action in February of seventeen to authorize this, of course, with the two contingencies that we had, that in and of itself, that board action to authorize the, to authorize the contract does not allow for the expenses until the contract is actually executed, is that what you're saying?
That is correct. The action in February was to give direction to staff to go back and prepare those contracts and bring them back for execution. I'd also note that every grant recipient in that year was subject to the same requirement of waiting until the grant, the contract was actually executed.
Okay. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, I still have some issues regarding the deed restriction and the uncertainty around that. When can we get some resolution and how soon before? Do we have any idea? I know it's been batted around for several months, but I still have no certainty on it.
You know, maybe I can, not to cut off there, but maybe I can help to respond to that. The museum folks had a meeting with the Forest Service in February of this year that we also attended. This is kind of the problem, it's a catch-22. What the Forest Service, I think, is looking for is the final project description that comes out of the EQ, the environmental questionnaire, and would form the basis of environmental review, would then give more certainty as to the scope of the project and whether any of it does, in their opinion, fall within a commercial context. The opinion which we stand by found that there's not an inherent inconsistency at the museum and a park, you see them all over the place. The question is whether there ancillary or additional uses might be encompassed with the museum that would push it over into the commercial. So it's been this dance with the Forest Services of, well, we don't have enough information so we're not going to really give you a position and, you know, waiting for that point where we do have enough information.
So if they proceed with their environmental questionnaire and they get to that point and then it's determined that they cannot do any commercial, what happens then? I mean, they spent, we spent all this money and is it still a viable project? Is the museum association able to sustain the maintenance of their ski museum?
And I actually think that might be something they could respond to.
I don't know why that microphone isn't on right now. Maybe the battery died? Nope, it's, no, but it's not on yet. I suspect the battery died.
It's not uncommon for museums to have these components as part of their projects, right? The challenge here is the deed restriction itself and the interpretation of what is a commercial use and what isn't a commercial use. Nonprofit, because it's a nonprofit, even though it might be running a cafe or a restaurant, is that really commercial or not? And I think it really will depend on what the Forest Service interpretation of that is. Will that change the project if they come back and say these are not allowed uses? Yes, very well could. Now, I don't know if the project would be financially viable if they were to eliminate some of those components of the project, but that is something they could certainly respond to as they know their project and what they would do to navigate those challenges should they face them.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, I'd love to, I said.
Okay.
So the founding, can I?
Yeah, please.
So the foundation's a 501(c)(3). And a 501(c)(3) by nature is not a commercial operation. Museums, when they collect entrance fees, they sell educational books. As proposed, we might have a little snack bar where somebody could get a pre-made sandwich and a cup of coffee. We're not talking about a cafe or something. The legal opinion we've gotten from our attorneys is that, no, that's the, it does not constitute a commercial operation, it's part of what supports the nonprofit. And so we're very confident that anything that we're proposing in the current description is not going to be deemed commercial. None of us, we're all volunteer board members, whatever money gets raised through those activities goes right back into the operation. And at the end of the day, before your board makes any final commitment to lease the land or allow construction, we fully intend to show that we can fund this, that we can make this last for generations, that we have raised enough money as an endowment to get the project, to get the museum going until attendance fees and membership fees and those sort of things can sustain the operation. We know that, and we've done studies, we've done, all the way back in 2009 was the first study we did, that showed that it would sustain itself, that it would collect enough money and that people would join annual memberships, like other institutions like this around the country, to keep it going. We have no intention of creating a white elephant. We have intention of bringing this incredible history, this Placer County's place in this history in the West and with the Olympics, to life for generations. After we're all long gone, this should be an institution that will support itself. So I think at the end of the day, and you're right, it is a catch-22. The Forest Service says, "It's not our problem, we don't have a dog in this fight." It's, in two letters we received from the Forest Service, from Randy Moore, regional forester, all the way back in 2011, he said, "We don't have a dog," essentially, "we don't have a dog in this fight, it's for the county to decide." Eli Alano said in his letter, which was a little vague in some places, I'll grant you that, also said the same thing, "It's for the county to decide." So that's what I was trying to say earlier, is we understand that, while technically, at the end of the day, we will not be, we are not a commercial operation, we will not be in violation of the deed, we know we have to work with the county to make sure that there is no risk down the road, that somebody can't throw rocks at the project and say that it's this or that. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's really the way we look at it.
So you're looking at like candy bars, potato chips and sodas?
Yeah, and if, and you know, a lot of museums will rent space after hours for a group to come in and they'll make a huge donation. A corporation comes in and they make a huge donation to the foundation to do a party or something like that. That's what we're talking about.
So you're not charging, you're just expecting anybody that uses the facility to donate?
Exactly, yeah. So, hey, we're confident, we have no intention of running a commercial operation. This is about the history and the common thread that runs through this whole community of winter sports. And I agree, Granite Chief needs to be upgraded, so, all right.
All right, Supervisor Wagon.
So, in a couple of questions here, in the staff recommendations, there is the third bullet that says apply contract balance to completing the environmental questionnaire, sixty thousand dollars. What's the thought behind that to answer this very question, which is, if you have the specificity in the environmental questionnaire complete and it delineates whatever commercial types of activities might be within the museum, then we give that back to the Forest Service and they can then finally answer that question?
Yeah, and I, you know, I don't know, to be honest with you, as part of the meetings I've been in, I'm not certain that even with that information that we'd get a determination about the project at that point. I think that the intention of the staff recommendation is to identify a path forward should your board want to consider moving forward the organization and allocating funds to complete a project. It was our feeling that it would be a better path to allocate the balance of funds to completing the environmental questionnaire as opposed to going back in time and funding expenses that were already incurred. Because the environmental questionnaire was the key deliverable tied to the original contract, we were trying to come up with a path that would ensure that deliverable was completed. Could that help with the Forest Service in terms of better understanding the project? Certainly it could, but I'm not certain that we'll get a determination from them even at that point. So I think as the project moves forward, that is an unknown that your board is going to have to take into consideration when approving the project or not, is that risk?
Well, I just, I'm wondering if all of that cannot be just streamlined by delineating examples of similar uses, like I recently saw the Art Museum and Museum and they have a restaurant that's not open all the time, but it's open frequently and they sell books. Smithsonian Museum, similar kinds of things, you can oftentimes books, buy books or other memorabilia, sometimes different kinds of foods. Those venues often also then rent out for events that are fundraising, types of events. So it seems to me like if you were just to make a list, compile a list and ask the Forest Service for that, rather than spending sixty thousand dollars to ask that question, they may or may not give us an answer, but I'm worried about the monies at this point. So I want to make sure I understand also in your PowerPoint presentation, it looks to me like using two different approval processes, the board is essentially, it sounds like we've approved the expenditure of three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars?
In total over, since 2008.
Correct?
That's correct.
With seventy, almost four thousand dollars yet to be expended?
Correct.
And in your recommendation, you are saying that there's thirteen thousand dollars of that seventy-three that's left?
No, sorry, I'll clear, I can clarify that. There's seventy-three thousand dollars left, that's the balance on the contract.
Approved and unexpended.
Correct. And then the thirteen thousand is the number of expenses incurred after the contract expired that are consistent with the budget that was included in the contract.
Yeah, that was my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, so the, there's seventy-three thousand of the three-thirty-seven that has yet to be expended that has been approved one way or another. And you're recommending that of that unexpended, thirteen thousand is appropriate for payment?
Correct.
And then you're recommending that we consider at least, maybe, expend sixty thousand dollars to complete the environmental questionnaire so that we can get an answer from the Forest Service?
Right. Yeah, you can get, well, that all depends because I think, again, the Forest Service issue, I don't know will be resolved with this step. And I, and again, I think that that's going to be a factor that your board is going to have to take into consideration one way or the other. So I don't think it's just about the Forest Service getting that answer, I also think it is about your board's interest in supporting this project moving forward and getting more information to the Community Development Resources Agency to move through that process. So it really depends, and I think that we have been trying to facilitate that largely because that was the purpose of the original approval, but we also have the challenges with the Forest Service unknowns, the deed restriction pieces, and so that's why it's important for you all to know that. And we have attempted to get resolution there in a variety of ways, sending letters, attending meetings, we have, and I know, I believe the Museum Foundation has provided the Forest Service with a list of like museums that often have restaurants and sell things, but I think the difference is that those aren't necessarily located on property with a deed restriction tied to them. And so when we did get a response from Eli Alano in 2017, he did identify some of the, his understanding in terms of fees, costs to get into the museum as potential commercial. Now, we may not agree with that, but that is at least what was conveyed in the letter.
Right, I get all that. So the last question I have, and that's it for this, for me at this point, the sixty thousand dollars, if we were to spend it, that environmental questionnaire would be specific and usable only to the site, I'm presuming, correct?
That's correct. That is correct.
So if then the site fails?
Correct. Correct.
Thanks.
Hold, hold one sec. If you're going to speak, we're going to need you to have to come up to the microphone so we can get you on the record. So if you can answer the question Supervisor Wiegand just raised, feel free to go ahead and step forward at this time and address that, Maren.
My computer crashed
Uh-oh.
last week, so I'm going off of my document that I took a picture of. So the information that, over two months ago, that we were asked to submit to Placer County staff included a very detailed budget that basically took what we felt had already been paid to our, that was, went directly to services that had already been applied to what the contract was, the whole goal of the contract was for. And that included work with, again, FOLONG, our architects, with the engineering companies, with our consultants. And a parking study, the original budget had no TOT contribution for the parking study. That is part of the EQ package. That, a budget that I submitted that was a revision has a reimbursement for what we already paid for work that was done, that goes directly to the EQ process. The second component to what I had submitted is a analysis of what it would cost for, to finalize the EQ process, which includes three surveys, and these were just rough estimates that we received from the consultants. And those estimates were totaling, one was $25,000, one was $4,000, and the other one was $3,000. There's time to manage that whole process from an executive director standpoint, which I think totaled about $6,000. The $60,000, I'm not sure where that number came from. That's not a number we supplied. The original revised budget that we supplied to Placer County staff was not presented today. And it would be highly recommended to be reviewed. The original budget that was approved in the contract, I could just take for, and I know we don't want to get granular here, so I'm going to take one example and I will be done. And, and again, we, we think that it might be beneficial for a third party to sit down and go through this contract with us so that we can all better understand it. And I'm just talking about this specific approved contract, not talking about the deed restriction. There was a line item for architectural consulting. And in that, there was a box, a box that's had $25,000 for the museum to contribute to, to pay for invoices from the architectural firm to provide the engineers what they needed for the EQ process. We have done that. That amount of $25,000 was paid to the architects, FOLONG. And an additional $13,000 was paid by the museum to the architects. The next bucket next to it is for the TOT contribution, which is $73,000. If we were to receive a match on that, we have received the $25,000, and I think the proposed is this other $13,000. I'm not sure how we would ever get to this $73,000 that was in this bucket. I think when the contract was put together, the buckets didn't make sense. And it would require a professional auditor to kind of sit down and review this with us so that we can make sure that the contract in itself was put together in the best format for it to actually be fulfilled. I hope that might, to not have it in front of you, it makes it a little more complicated, but I just wanted to relay that the information that we had provided didn't get shared today.
Okay, so if, if I may just ask a question, we'll hopefully seek some clarification. It sounds like the three requests that you made of the three different consultants to give you estimates adds up to a little over $30,000, about $32,000, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And you are acknowledging staff's use of the $13,000 for payment for costs already incurred?
Correct.
Okay. My understanding of what staff is recommending is that we go ahead and make, make that payment for the 13 and make the 60 available to complete this process. It sounds like 60 is going to be more than enough to complete the process. If you have, from the consultant's estimates showing about $32,000 is what you're going to need. So I'm not sure where we're at cross purposes right now. It sounds like you're, you're going to be...
There are other invoices that we've paid for work that would fall in line with the contract that incurred in the year of 2018 that we have not received a match or a contribution from. And those were also in the originally submitted to Placer staff. And it would, I don't have the exact totals of what all those are, but they do get us closer to that $73,000 figure.
Well, I, I think that nothing in what the board is being asked to do today precludes us having that conversation.
Right, okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to share this with you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Todd, did you have something to add?
I, I think you touched on it, just the clarity, when we talk about the $13,000 and the 60, that's the amount that equates to $73,000, and that, which is the remaining amount of the, of the grant proceeds. Kind of talked about it in different ways, but that's really what the breakdown is.
And I did want to add that all the payments that we have processed are consistent with the contract, consistent with the budget, the contract term. Some of the invoices that we did receive, as I've mentioned to you, weren't consistent with that budget or were outside of that contract term. Now, if we were, if your board wanted staff to be able to process some of those invoices that Jill is referring to, then we would also need that budget revision to happen. So that would be something that your board would need to direct us to do, which we could do. But again, that would be looking backwards and that would erode the available funds that are there to complete the environmental questionnaire. So I just want to put that out there.
And I think, just for the benefit of our sake, we understand that nothing that we are being recommended to do today under option one precludes us from having that conversation in the future.
Correct.
Okay. Any Supervisor Gustafson?
Erin, I had a couple of questions. One is, so much of this has revolved, well, let me step back. In my career up here, I've had to work with state and federal agencies for many, many years. And these are challenging questions for state and federal agencies sometimes to answer. So going back to what I perceive a commercial use to be versus what this is, fees are often charged even in Placer County parks, even for use of the recreation facilities at that park, correct?
Yes.
To offset operating costs, correct? So, having some sort of fees or fee revenue associated with offsetting costs appears to be in line with non-commercial use and available for parks. And I understand the challenges with getting the Forest Service to give us specific answers. I do believe some parts of that deed restriction, and I'm going way back in my memory banks here, had to do with the concern that skieria parking might occur on that site and wanting to make sure that that did not occur, that we were not expanding a business or a commercial operation that clearly would, would be a benefit to a commercial operation. So, that's my recollection of some of the discussions back in the 90s, but I will defer that that could be clouded by other discussions since then. This project, it was caught in the middle of a number of changing dynamics with the county and contract management and, and a lot of concern from both sides in the community about whether this was the right location and a number of issues. And coming into this fresh, I'm going to urge us to be fresh in our thinking moving forward to get resolution to these projects, to allow flexibility the best we can. Projects change, our own county projects change. Every project I've ever been involved with in construction and permitting changes based on input from the public, based on all kinds of issues. So, I'm going to urge flexibility in addressing these needs and getting the answers we need from the EQ to address the concerns, not just of the Forest Service, but of the community. Because ultimately, that's who we're responsible for. And until we take that step and spend those funds and finish the EQ, we can't begin the process of identifying what level of environmental document we're going to need, what are the key issues. And as we all know, there's plenty of time during all these processes for public input and comment and disagreement. I've been receiving a number of emails on this project and, and I'm certainly familiar with it from many years of sitting in the audience on, at various meetings. So, I would just urge us to take your option one and work with the museum to complete the EQ, be flexible in those buckets as long as there are legal expenses that would be attributable to the, the project that we need done.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Gustafson, a second by Supervisor Holmes. Is there any other conversation amongst the board? Supervisor Wiegand?
Yeah, I just, I guess I kind of want to be clear and just throw this out for the record as much as anything. So, you know, I don't know how much it's expected that the museum would cost, but for the sake of argument, let's say it's $5 million. So the question for me is, am I supportive of having some taxpayers' money be used to that end? And my answer is, sure. How much is something we could talk about forever? So the question to me also is, am I supportive of the museum potentially at the site? I've already voted for that. I'm not a museum expert, but I sure think that it's normal and desirable for a museum to have things like the ability to serve food and have fundraisers and sell books and memorabilia for fundraising as well as making the amenity the most desirable for visitation. But we started down this road, in my view, that has taken to the place I'm not real comfortable with, and that is that we've authorized $337,000 to be expended for something. I just know the answer to all those other questions. And it seems to me that it's not a real comp, I know the Forest Service can be bureaucratic in providing these kinds of answers, but it's classically, a lot of criticism of attorneys. But whether or not this is a commercial activity, or, you know, a fly shop on the corner would clearly be a commercial activity. And I understand why the Forest Service...
And why I would support.
Yeah. I would support the Forest Service's deed restriction on not allowing that type of commercial activity as much as I love any fly shop. Because that was not the intended purpose of giving us the property. Its purpose generally is for a park, whether or not a museum is a fit there or something that people could argue about forever. I think it's a good use of the site, complete with some commercial activities within it. So I guess with all that, and especially therapy, I'm happy to vote for the motion today. But these questions are not that complicated, but they can be argued about forever. And so I want to know, as we move forward, how much is this thing expected to cost? How much is, is expected that Placer County taxpayers are going to fund it? Because I think we should know that upfront. And then getting a resolution one way or another from the Forest Service, you know, maybe we could engage our Congress representatives to go to them and say, "Give us an answer to this specific question." It's going to look like a regular museum that has limited amounts of commercial use. It's not that hard.
Yeah.
And then at least we wouldn't be spending $60,000 on something we may or may not be able to ever get a return on that investment. So again, that, obviously a little intense with all of this stuff, but I want to make sure that I express those concerns and I'm voting for the motion at this particular point in time.
Okay.
But I want answers to those questions as we move forward.
All right, any... This is a motion in support of option number one. That was the motion. Any other comments by board members? All right, we do have a motion in support of option number one. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we move on to our one, our one department item. This is Public Works, a presentation of Storm Response for 2019.
Best for last. Last for last. So, good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Kevin Tabor, Engineering Manager for the Road Maintenance Division. And we were asked to put together a quick presentation, some facts and figures, some nice photos of what your road maintenance crews were up to this morning. So seeing that I have the rest of the afternoon...
That was a good joke.
I can go as quickly yours, I can make it as long as you want. But I'll move through briskly and definitely feel free to ask any questions as, as I go through the presentation. But last month, the, excuse me, United States Drought Monitor map was released and we're officially out of, out of the drought. And so, two years ago, we, we started climbing that hill. Last winter was kind of a dud. And then this winter, particularly January and February, put us over the hump. So, what that amounted to was a lot of work on your road maintenance division behalf, not only with snow removal, but down below with flood response. So I'll run, like I said, I'll run through some facts and figures and show you some pictures. But some of them are pretty impressive. Oh, I pressed wrong, sorry. Okay. As you all know, Placer County is unique and it's what makes it special, you know. Many times during the wintertime, we'll have a flood response as well as a snow removal response. We have over 1,000 miles of maintained roadway. Just over 200 of those are above 5,000 foot elevation. And so that's a typical snow removal response. When, when, I'll say, an average storm comes in, we're removing snow at 5,000 foot elevation. This year, as, as typical in, in, I'll say, big winters, we also had over 50 miles of lower elevation roads affected by repeated flooding. And at times we had roads closed for over the week. Because of the crazy winter storms up this way, Interstate 80 is, as most of you know, were closed, Interstate 80 and Highway 50 were closed multiple times. And one, one closure of Interstate 80 lasted for almost two, two continuous days. In, in this area, crews, not just Placer County crews, Caltrans, El Dorado County, Washoe, Truckee, North Star, worked a tremendous amount of hours to try and keep the roads open. And for the most part, I'd have to say we all did pretty good trying times for sure. And this is where the, kind of some of the statistics get kind of interesting. Over three pay periods, just for Placer County Road Maintenance Crews, starting towards the end of January, in three pay periods, 42 days, road maintenance crews worked a total of 6,981 hours of overtime. Just overtime, so that's 166 hours of overtime a day. That's snow removal as well as flood response. Majority of that was snow removal. That amounted to one period of 24-hour snow plowing for 21 days straight, then had a little bit of a break and then resumed another 13-day period of 24-hour snow removal operations. During that time, just for January and February, we purchased over 58,000 gallons of fuel just to keep the snow removal equipment running. And, and that's just the snow removal equipment. And I'll have to, I'll have to say it was dicey at times with the interstate being closed. We came perilously close to running out of fuel and talk about not being able to run our equipment. But through a series of panicked phone calls by myself, Peter, our, our foreman up here, Butch, we were able to get that done. The snowpack are just, this season, we didn't exceed any seasonal records as far as snow and rainfall amounts go. But February was tough, especially with, with snow removal. Squaw Valley majored over 300 inches of snowfall in February and that beat the old record set in 2017. And that exceeded the previous February record by more than 100 inches and set a record for the most snow in any month by 18 inches. So even though we didn't have a, a record-breaking season, it, it can, the intensity and duration of a storm, of a single storm can, can really put you on your heels. I wasn't able to find a, an updated, I have a call in to the Central Sierra Snow Lab, but this is kind of over the century, day-dawn snowfall at Donner Summit, and that's through 2015. Just Friday afternoon, I did receive a report from Shutter Bowl that their snowpack total for the, for the season was right around 51 feet and they had a maximum snowpack of 245 inches. So, that puts them in about the upper 10 percent, that puts... 245 inches. So that puts them in about the upper 10 percent, that puts that, those measurements, of course, those are snow, those are probably at mid-mountain measurements, but it does put us in the, in the top 20 of overall snow years. There's a lot to contend with. This, this data here is courtesy of OpenSnow.com. They wanted me to give them a gratuitous plug. I paid $19 to join. It's worth it. But like I said, overall, season-wise, we didn't exceed any records. But on February 10th, Squaw reported 46 inches of snow, and that's in one 24-hour period. And for the locals, you probably remember, most of that seemed like it was overnight between Saturday into Sunday morning. And just, just tremendous amount of snowfall. It tapered off during the week, but then started back up the following weekend. And both of those, Monday was a holiday as well, President's Day, as well as Lincoln's birthday, the 10th, and the 17th, and the 11th, and the 18th. So not only were we dealing with tremendous amounts of snow, we were dealing with crowds. This is also courtesy of Open Snow through February 9th. The season total column there gives you an idea of, of where the resorts ended up, or at least as of, as of, excuse me, April 9th. And the far right column shows that all the resorts are above their annual average, some markedly so. And again, our, our snow removal crews were, were tested at times, and overall, I think they came out pretty darn good. And to point out how the intensity can vary also from, from area to area, you look at the north side resorts, they, they, they're reporting quite a bit more snow than the south side resorts. And we even see that in Tahoe Basin's. Kings Beach will traditionally report a lot less snow than, than the west shore. So just, just some neat photos, you know, our snow removal efforts are primarily taken care of with, with graders. Those are our snowplows. When you get this much snow falling in one area at one time, our graders can't keep up. So we're, we're forced to just try and blow the, blow the roads open with our, our snowblowers there. And our graders move at about 12 to 13 miles an hour. Our blowers here move at about three to four miles an hour. So when we have that much snowfall, it takes three to four times the amount of time to get, to get a road open. And that's, that's a shot of Serene Lakes there when we finally did get the road open through the effort of Vance Man. I'll point him out specifically. This is a gratuitous plug for a 1986 plow sander that we still have in operation, but we have four new plow sanders in, proposed in this upcoming budget, two for Tahoe, two for the Serene Lakes and below area. So when you see that come across your board, I'll give it the thumbs up. Just for the folks up here, this isn't anything new that you didn't see this winter, but maybe for some of the other folks who are watching at home, just a tremendous amount of snowfall that not only the residents, but their crews were dealing with. And you just hope that this deck was designed for that. It's hard to know it's still there, so presumably it was. Now, I wanted to touch a little bit, circle back around, you know, when, when, let's say a typical snowstorm comes in, we're plowing from about 5,000 feet, Blue Canyon up, and that's 200 miles of road. You know, our Tahoe crew is handling the Tahoe Basin area, and then our Colfax crew is handling from Donner Summit, Serene Lakes, back down. When we get a colder storm rolling in, if it gets down to 3,000 feet, we're adding another 91 miles of road. Gets down to 2,000 feet below Colfax, we're adding 112 miles of road that we're having to remove snow on. And when it gets down to snow in Auburn, then, then that adds, you know, about another 200 miles. So we have to dispatch our personnel appropriately. But when we get those low snows, and like we did this year, we had the low snows as well as some flooding events, we've, and we've got the mileage that we're, that we're plowing, but then we've also got about another 635 miles below 2,000 feet that we have to take care of at the same time. So at times this winter, we really were stretched thin. So transition here in a little bit, what we dealt with mostly in District 2. We had a lot of roads that flooded and, and were closed for at least a week. And this has escalated the 24-hour response from our crews as well. We, we offer sand and sandbags to the public, and they always get utilized sometime in the summertime for landscaping, but we try to put the kip on that. That's no lie. The, the, actually, it's the same photo, I believe. This is Wise Road, or, yeah, Nicholas Road, west of Wise. This is, when people don't pay attention to our road close sign, we have a, have a swift water rescue. It looks like the 18 van back there. But Cal Fire and, and Placer County Fire were on their, on their toes with people driving through closures. And I get asked this question, why, why are, why do you close the road because of water? Can't you pump the, pump the road clear? And usually, it's the road is going through the middle of farmland, not, not the other way around. Circle back to, to flooding and runoff, and what we're going to probably be experiencing here over the next several months is, this is actually in Nevada County. This is the crossing there on Soda Springs Road, just west of Donner Pass Road. But this happened a couple of weeks ago, where a tremendous amount of runoff all of a sudden caused an ice dam. There was a little bit of human factor there with Union Pacific, but it was mostly Mother Nature. And this land locked the entire Serene Lakes subdivision for almost two days. They couldn't get in or out. So Nevada County, Placer County responded, and made sure emergency, emergency personnel were taken care of. Of course, addition to snow removal, we're dealing with downed trees. This is a lot of trees that came down on Nelson Lane in Lincoln, just inside Placer County. Couldn't shove it over to the city of Lincoln, but that's okay. And we, late last month, we started to see culvert failures crop up from that heavy, heavy runoff. This is Roxlings Road in, in the Newcastle area that all of a sudden just opened up. This happened over a period of about an hour and a half. Just a little bit of traffic, a lot of water, and it just carried the backfill away. And this is my last slide, so I'll wrap it up and turn it over to the board if you have any questions. But this is, this is down in Sheridan. Somebody decided to take a little joyride on one of our dirt roads, and, and it didn't quite work. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Augustin?
I didn't really want to be reminded of February this year, but I wanted to thank staff. Incredible job out there. I know it was challenging. For those of you who don't get to live in it up here, there are times when it was extremely claustrophobic, I guess, in the sense that if there was an emergency, people weren't going to get helped because the roads were so impacted with snow. But I just, I can't thank your crews enough. I know they worked around the clock. I know the private snow removal contractors did as well. And I really appreciate all the work in keeping us healthy and safe and getting us through February. And hopefully, we get lots of snow spread out further next year.
That's the key. That's the key.
All right. Thank you very much for the update.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay. Having completed all of the agendized items for our meeting today, and there being no closed session, we will adjourn and wish everyone safe travels down the hill.